Yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna call the case again. Twenty-one thirty-one Brown sixty A Designers Road map twenty-three parcel seven A. Application for a special permit under Wellfleet zoning bylaw six point one point five B to construct to death with deck, keep doing it, within the setbacks. Chris has Manny appeared?
No, not yet.
Okay, well, the board for this case was Trevor, Manny, Sharon, Will, and Jan. And I think in this case, I'm just gonna go ahead and substitute Mick for Manny. It's a continuation and we're not really hearing anything.
Okay.
So I don't think there's gonna be a problem with Mullen rule. So, and Mr. Brown has asked for a continuation until the twenty-fourth of February in order to get his plans in place, so I need a motion to continue.
Oh, move.
Who did it?
I did.
Okay.
Thank you.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Trevor?
Aye.
Mick?
Aye.
Sharon? Aye. Will?
Aye.
And Jan?
Aye.
Okay, we will see Mr. Brown in February. Okay. Twenty-two oh three Russo, one seventy-four Pleasant Point Avenue map thirty-five parcel one one three. Application for a variance under Massachusetts general law, chapter forty A S ten and Wellfleet zoning bylaw eight point four point three, to vary from the terms of the Wellfleet zoning bylaw table five point four point two to allow a structure fencing closer to the side property line than twenty-five feet. And the board for this will be Manny is recusing himself from this, I mean, not Manny, Mick is recusing himself from this one. The board for this will be Trevor, Will, Rita, myself, and Al. Okay, Mr. Russo. You are muted, Mr. Russo, you have to unmute yourself.
Hi, I think I'm unmuted now.
Yes, you're unmuted now.
Great. First of all, thank you so much, everyone, for coming together tonight. I would start, like to start out by saying, kind of explaining why some of the fences in question has been built already. And I had numerous discussions with Justin Post, who was the Wellfleet Building Inspector, when I was planning and starting the remodel of my home. And through those discussions, I had the understanding that I could build a fence eight foot high above grade without a permit. As it turns out, I misunderstood. I did not intentionally violate the bylaws, and I sincerely apologize for inadvertently doing so. And then I guess from there, I would like to go through the four criteria for a variance and explain why I think that my situation meets those criteria. So first of all, is topography. And that specifically, topography affects my home as well as my neighbors. All of our homes were built at the same time in the eighteen nineties and are very similar in size and construction method. And in this case, they were all built two to three feet above grade. If you'll refer to the engineer's plan that is in the packet that was provided to you, you can see how the first floor level of my home, which is the same as my neighbors on both sides, is two to three feet above grade. So because of the, this effect, the fence is down on grade, it's not relative to our porch levels. So the impact of standing, it's like as if we were each standing on two-foot platforms at a seven-foot fence, you're looking right over it at eye level with one another. If I was, if I could only have a seven-foot tall fence in this instance. So second, for the criteria, is a literal enforcement of the bylaw would impose a hardship. And in my case, a literal enforcement of this bylaw that would restrict me to having a fence that is only seven foot tall would impose a financial hardship. My property value is impacted by the business being run next door to me. The house to the west of mine, which is owned by the Wales family, is not a home that is occasionally rented out. It is a business that the Wales run to maximize their profits with no regard for the impact their business has on their neighbors. The Wales more often than not have more than the allowable maximum of eight tenants and once had eighteen tenants that spent the night in their property. The neighbor most impacted by their business is me and my family. If I were to try to sell my home, the business being run next door would significantly impact the value of my home and the pool of prospective buyers would be greatly reduced. I know that I definitely would not have bought my home in twenty-eighteen if I knew a business of this nature with an ever-changing but consistently raucous cast of characters would be occupying the adjacent house. A literal enforcement of the bylaw that fences be no more than seven foot tall above grade does impose substantial hardship on me, both financially and emotionally. Emotionally, in the sense that I do not have the peace of mind that I will have the privacy one would expect when occupying their back porch and backyard. Given the topography I have described, having a seven-foot tall fence, which the bylaws allow between me and my neighbors would allow us to have direct eye contact with one another when we are on our porches. Having a fence a foot taller than the bylaw allows would make all the difference between having eye contact or not. This extra foot in fence height I am requesting a variance for would mitigate the impact of the business being run next door to me has on my home. Thirdly, desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. I feel that this issue is addressed by the letter from the Wright family, who are my neighbors and own the home directly to the east of me, where I'm also requesting the variance to put an eight-foot tall fence between my property and theirs, who wrote in support of my variance request to have a fence taller than the bylaws allow. This issue is also addressed by my neighbor Warren Lenore, who's my neighbor directly across Pleasant Point Avenue from me, who also wrote a letter in support of my variance request. Both of, both of these letters, as you will see, have no objection to it and are in support of it and they, neither of them who are, and these are the people that are impacted the most, have no objections to it whatsoever and are in support of it. And then I'd like to talk about the Wales letter that's in opposition to me later after I finish talking about the four criteria. But I would like to point out right now that the Wales in their letter of objection are unable to identify how my fence being a foot taller than the bylaws allow, how it being eight feet rather than seven feet tall, which seven feet is allowed, is to their detriment at all. They don't want my fence to impede upon their unfettered access and use of my property. They don't want a fence there at all, for whatever reason. That's their call. I'm entitled to have a fence that's at least seven feet tall, and I'm requesting a variance for it to be a foot taller than that for the reasons I've described. Finally, for number four, the fourth criteria is that desirable relief may be granted without nullifying the intent and purpose of the bylaw. The bylaw being fences should be no more than seven foot above grade. The bylaw recognizes the need for privacy between neighbors. That's the intent of the fence in many respects. Otherwise, fence heights would be capped at four feet, you know, and they could say, well, we just think that fences should control your dogs and your children or something, but you know, you shouldn't expect visual privacy from one another. They allow a seven-foot tall fence, which if my home was built on grade, would be taller relative to the situation I'm asking for. And you may assume that there are other remedies open to me, such as plantings to afford privacy. However, that is not an option in this case for the same reason I am requesting this variance, topography. There is not a native species that can grow to eight feet in height in the six feet I have between my house and the side property line. The Wrights, who are the family to the east of me, who I'm also requesting the variance to build a fence between me and them, they've, they've addressed this issue in their letter of support of my variance, where they talk about the fact that they have tried to grow a privet hedge, which is a non-native species, for more than a decade with the intent of providing privacy between their property and mine. It hasn't been successful. It's taken over a decade, it's sparse. You see right over it, you know, it's, it hasn't worked. And they've, they've been cultivating that thing for over a decade, and it impedes upon my property, it requires significant maintenance on my side to keep it from overrunning my property, even though it's planted on theirs. This variance is a, so this variance is a remedy for their failed experiment. Your grant to me the relief by requesting is consistent with the intent of the bylaws, which allows seven-foot tall fences between neighboring properties. And once again, I'm arguing that because of topography, that this variance request primary, that's my primary reason why I feel like it should be granted. I would like to address the letter from the Wales, my neighbors to the east. But should I do so now, or do you have questions, or how should we proceed?
Well, since not everyone has heard the letter from the Wales, I suppose we have to, we should be reading all the letters before there's any addressing of that. I'm also curious as to whether there's anyone in the audience who wants to speak to this property or to this case. If you can, you could raise your hand, that would allow me to see you. Not seeing any hands. You can also hit a raise my hand button on Zoom if you want to put your hand up. Okay. Perhaps I should read the three letters. And then we'll go from there. All right. So first letter is from Mr. Lenore from Pleasant Point Avenue. He says, "To whom it may concern, I am writing in support of Clyde Russo's variance application to install sections of overheight fence above eight foot above grade rather than the allowable seven foot between his home at one seventy-four Pleasant Point Avenue and his immediate neighbors to the east and west. Mister Russo did not create the condition that requires overheight fencing for privacy. His home as well as his immediate neighbors were built at the same time in the mid-century eighteen nineties on very narrow lots and were all built with first floors and porches twenty-four to thirty feet above grade. Without this variance, any fence between these homes would not provide privacy. As the owner of the home most directly across Pleasant Point Avenue from Mister Russo, I would not be impacted or even be aware of the overheight fence sections on his property since he's not requesting a variance to install them anywhere on his property other than between his home and his immediate neighbors to the east and west." Mister Lenore. "Mr. Wright, to whom it may concern, we recently received a copy of our neighbor Clyde Russo's request for a variance regarding the height of the fence he proposes to erect between our houses along the shared boundary. If I understand correctly, the existing statutes permit a fence of seven feet with no required setback from his property line, and he is requesting permission to raise that limit to eight feet. The homes on our bluff were constructed over a hundred and twenty years ago and were placed on very small parcels. They were not built at ground level, but rather placed on blocks two feet plus five feet, two plus feet above grade. The lot size on our end of Pleasant Point has for more than a century afforded residents less than complete visual privacy. Decades ago, we at one seventy Pleasant Point addressed this issue by planting privet hedges, which at this point are taller than eight feet from the ground. We are not huge fans of stockade fencing ourselves. Had we been, we would have installed one ourselves at some point over the long history of our family's occupancy. That said, the hedge does require maintenance, and Mister Russo would prefer a physical barrier that precludes the shrubs growing over the property line. That is understandable. Given the height of our existing hedge, the impact of an eight-foot wooden barrier on the property line would cause us no hardship. We do not object to his proposed plan as it pertains to our shared border." And then from Mister Wales. And the three signatures, Kendra Eklund, Roger Wales, and Charles Wales, one eighty Pleasant Point Road. Dear members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, thank you for your letter dated November sixteenth twenty twenty-one inviting our feedback on the variance application for a fence height of eight feet at seven, one seventy-four Pleasant Point Road. The board should first be aware that a portion of the eight-foot fence for which the applicant is petitioning for a variance has prematurely been constructed on our mutual property boundary. This letter will demonstrate the detrimental impact that this fence has and will have to our budding property at one eighty Pleasant Point Road. Height of the fence, we object to the applicant's assertion that eight feet of fence height is necessary to maintain privacy between our homes for the following reasons. One, there are significant lengths of the shared property boundary where there are no structures on either side. This particularly applies to what is considered to be the front yard of our properties, meaning the southern border facing Blackfish Creek, between the edge of the front porch and the top of the bank. More commonly, fences in front yards are limited to three to four feet of height with an additional setback requirement as the fence height increases. An exception for a street-facing side of the property would be understandable, but that is not the case here. Two, there are no windows on the ground floor of the applicant's home that provide direct visibility into any living areas. Privacy between the ground floor of our homes is already maintained without the presence of a fence. We also have strong concerns about the presence and location of the fence and its further detrimental impact to our property and the surrounding neighborhood. Fence proximity to property boundary. The applicant's construction of the fence on the property boundary has left only thirty inches of clearance between the fence and the edge of our porch. This is a significant imposition that creates very unsafe conditions for our home and yard maintenance. In particular, there is insufficient space to safely erect a ladder to reach the porch roof and second story of our home. It is, too, it is our understanding from an informational conversation with Victor Staley that a fence should be set back from the property boundary in the equal amount to the excess height. If true, the applicant must relocate the fence to a permissible distance from the property boundary. Three, it is our understanding that Massachusetts law requires abutting neighbors to share the maintenance costs of a partition fence unless other arrangements have been made. It is also our understanding that the applicant's fence is considered a partition fence because it's located on property boundary. To date, the applicant has not sought our consent to build a partition fence between our properties nor attempted to establish any agreement between neighboring properties, which absolves us of the responsibility for maintenance. We strongly object to the imposition of a maintenance obligation on our part without knowledge or consent. Four, the solid, solid stockade-style construction of the fence in its current location blocks the prevailing southwest winds from the bay that cool our home from the summer heat. Without this airflow, our discomfort and our supplemental cooling cross increase. Five, the fence blocks a drastic amount of natural light from entering the ground floor of our home. Environmental and landscape stability concerns. It is our understanding conveyed by the Wellfleet Comfort Conservation Commission that any construction within the area of critical environmental concern requires explicit approval from the commission. The fence is located in an area that we understand to be part of the A C E C. We request that the zoning board also require the applicant obtain approvals that may still be necessary from the Conservation Commission with regard to the A C E C. Obstructed view. The newly constructed partition fence that divides our front yards effectively blocks the majority of the water view from our home and from our neighbors' homes to the east, westward down the bay toward Great Island. With our front porches facing south, they have been used regularly for the fifty-three years of our residents on Pleasant Point on late summer afternoons to enjoy the spectacular sunsets. The new barrier puts an abrupt and sorrowful end to this beloved tradition amongst family, friends, and neighbors. Although view may not be considered the right of a homeowner, it is well established that water views have a significant impact on property enjoyment and value. Additionally, other non-abutting neighbors and local residents have approached us to express their concern about the applicant's fence and the negative impact it creates to our shared views of the natural landscape and the sense of community, and ask that we, as abutting property owners, communicate objections from the neighborhood at large. I understand your request for feedback has reached other immediate neighbors, and you may hear from them directly. In summary, strong potential exists for the applicant to mitigate this negative impact on the immediate area precedent of privacy borders between properties in our area. Among the five original water-facing homes with abutting properties at the top of Pleasant Point Road, this is the first variance request of its kind. Previously, no solid wooden stockade-style fences have existed between these properties, primarily due to the close proximity of our homes and the reasons we have listed above. Instead, homes in our neighborhood have established natural privacy barriers, borders using arborita and similar plantings such as hedges. These privacy borders filter light, air, and light naturally and are beneficial for taking root to mitigate erosion. We would strongly encourage the members of the board to conduct a site visit to the area in the course of your evaluation of the applicant's request for a variance. In closing, we request that the board incorporate this letter into the minutes of the meeting as part of the permanent record. It is submitted respectfully with sincere gratitude for your consideration of the unique circumstances relating to homes and properties at Pleasant Point. And there were some pictures attached to it as well, which obviously didn't show, but will be in the record. Okay, and you wanted to speak to that, Mr. Russo? Now that I've read all the letters.
Yes, I would. Thank you for doing so. That was a lot of reading.
Night is young.
The, you know, I, in some respects, I don't know where to begin. You know, I think that the first thing I'd like to point out is that is that they know that I'm entitled to build a fence that's up to seven feet tall. And you know, the majority of their letter goes on and on about, you know, just a fence in particular. It never addresses the issue at hand, which is the fact that I am requesting to build a fence that's eight feet tall rather than just seven. They never address that. It's just they talk about just having a fence, period. And they just, I don't know, it just feels like they've just thrown up a bunch of smokescreen in there. You know, for example, they know that this fence is built entirely on my property. It's not built on the property line. But you know, they go on and on about that and that I'm imposing a maintenance, you know, hazard upon them. You know, imagine if I did have a privet hedge there that grew over their property, that would be a maintenance issue. And then, I don't know, they just, they go on, they raise up a lot of issues that are just non-starters. You know, the fact that the Conservation Commission needs to weigh in on this, they have, and they're not, they're not opposing my variance request or have any objections to be putting up a fence where I have and want to. You know, they go on about the fact that they feel entitled to use my property to maintain theirs, that they feel like they should be able
Mr. Russo, I think I'm gonna stop you here, because we don't need to get into a fight between neighbors, and I think I need to hear questions, you need to hear questions from the board. So I'm gonna stop at this point and just go to the board and see if anyone has any questions. So, Will?
No, I have no questions at this point.
Okay. Trevor?
I guess I'm not sure how we should even be handling this procedurally, and I'm not really sure how to articulate my thinking, but there's no, there's, there's really no reference, and someone should correct me if, if I'm wrong, but there's, as far as I can see, there is really no reference to fencing in our zoning bylaws.
Right. Here, I can, I can walk you through this because Victor walked me through it.
Okay.
Okay? All right. So here's the deal. A fence up to seven feet is considered a fence, and therefore it does not need a building permit. And so it's just a fence, and it doesn't have any basis in our zoning bylaw. But the Massachusetts Building Code defines a fence over eight feet, over seven feet, as a structure. So what we're really being asked to do is to put an additional structure within the setback. Because once it's a structure, it needs to be twenty-five feet from the neighbor's property. So it's no longer really, for our purposes, a fence, it's a structure. And that's why it's in front of us. We're being asked to vary from our setback requirements for a structure. That's why it's with us. And it's not with the, and the Conservation Commission came back to us with, it's not, they don't do fences, but in fact, they actually probably should in this case because it's no longer a fence, it's a structure. So it probably is also subject to Conservation Commission regulations, but I, I'm not Conservation Commission and can't answer it.
I'd like to interject at this point, and in conservation, Hillary is well aware of the specifics of this case, and, and they are not objected to it.
Right. But they are considering it a fence.
I feel like
For our purposes, it's a structure. So that's, that's where that is. Does that help you, Trevor?
Yes. But I don't have any further thoughts at the moment.
Okay.
Hoping somebody else would.
Okay. All right. Manny?
I believe because it's a structure, it would be considered a structure. We shouldn't allow it because it cannot be twenty-five feet away from the setback. And that's about it for now.
Okay. Andy?
Could I, I'd like to point out one, one more thing.
I want to get around to the board, Mr. Russo, and then you'll have a chance to speak. Andy?
No, I don't have any questions here.
Okay. Dan?
Um, I don't have any questions. I, I agree with Manny. I don't, I don't think that, I mean, a difference of a foot is only going to affect eye contact. It's not gonna affect noise, it's not gonna affect anything else.
Exactly.
Okay. Al?
Yes, I think all of the Wales's objections that I was able to hear and understand would be affected by a seven-foot high fence as well. In other words, you know, the difficulty in, in setting a ladder up, you know, to reach the, the roof, you know, would be the same whether the fence is seven or eight feet. And I understand Mr. Russo's interest in, you know, having some, some peace, and, and I, I do ascribe to the view that good fences make for good neighbors. And I think, you know, one foot, you know, doesn't, it seems to me that it's, it's sort of a no-brainer that this, you know, should not be, it should be considered as a fence, and we should, we should vary.
And Rita? You're muted, Rita. You're muted, Rita.
Okay, I agree with Al. I think that it is a fence. And twelve inches is not gonna make that much of a difference.
And Will.
Yeah, I guess my, my concern with, if, if I were gonna vote yay for, for the variances, I mean, the, the primary ground, at least for my agency, that we were being asked to allow an eight-foot fence is because of the activity of the neighbor. Yeah, I mean, uh, you know, if there are eighteen people there, that's, that's a burden. But, but I think we're being asked to, uh, grant, grant, grant relief because there are too many tenants next door. And I, I think the, I, I think the, uh, that's come back to bite us down, down the road when someone wants to build an eight, an eight-foot fence. And also the, the language, cuz I went out and I walked quite a way, I walked around and spent some time there today. And much of the lot i- i- is ground level. There's a big yard lo, 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 looking out at the water. And so when you're standing on the land, it, it's an eight-foot fence. It's only when you're, you're up on the porch that it becomes, you know, that, that you reach that two or three feet incre- increase in grade, so. I'm not looking favorably on this application.
No. Well, my problem, if I come back around to me, is that, this is not about a fence. This is about a zoning bylaw that says this is a structure. And we don't allow structures to go right on the property line. And to grant the appeal, I mean, one thing we have to figure out is that the applicant's property is different than the rest of the neighborhood, and it isn't. It's exactly the same. All of the neighborhood is like that, and other people in the neighborhood have found mitigating factors that didn't require a variance. I, I don't actually see the difference in financial hardship between, um, eight feet and seven feet. I also think that we are not in the business of regulating what someone does with their property, and we can't get into the business of creating variances in order to help somebody deal with a problem with tenants next door. That's something for the police or someone else to be dealing with. And I don't think that it is wise of this board to be setting a precedent that says, you can put an eight-foot structure on the setback. That just, that does nullify the bylaw, in my opinion. If this were not a, a structure, then that might be different, but it isn't a fence, it's a structure according to the, to the building code. So that's sort of where I am. And further comment.
I mean, I, I would like to respond to some of the opinions that have been brought up. It, 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 it seems like people, uh, kind of zeroed in upon all of the tenants and the fact that the whales are running this as a business, and yes, that is a hardship, and it's not the primary reason why I'm impacting it. And as, as you observed, Will, if you're out in the yard, yes, it is an eight-foot fence, but you spend, as a homeowner, spend the majority of your time on the front porch. That is where I'm subjected to eye-level contact if the fence is only seven feet tall above grade. Um, and what's, what's changed historically over the hundred and twenty-five years is the use of the home. That gets back to the eighteen people that are, you know, camping out next door.
Again, Mr. Russo, that really is not something that this board has jurisdiction over. That's why I'm saying, you know, it's, you know, it's not something we can grant you relief to deal with.
I'm not saying it is, Sharon. I'm saying that this, the fact that it's being used in this manner-
Oh, wait a minute.
Different now as opposed to historical usage.
Madam Chair.
Yes, yes.
It's Ben Zander on the line, and, and I'm gonna break my rule about speaking up on cases. I don't have a dog.
You never have a rule about that. You speak up, up on them all the time. Since when is that a rule?
I'll leave sufficiently proud of it, but, but look, I'm looking at your zoning bylaw right now.
Right.
At page twelve. And it defines structure. And it says, anything constructed or erected, the use of which requires location on the ground or attachment to something located on the ground, except a boundary wall or fence. So I, I, I think the building inspector is incorrect in, in what he related to you. I, I believe that under the building code, a fence over a certain height requires a building permit because it is considered to be a structure that requires code compliance. But I don't believe that under your zoning code, a fence is a structure that's required to comply with setback requirements. So I, you know, to that extent, I can't read the zoning code as saying anything other than that the fences are accepted from structures. Furthermore, I don't believe a str- a fence is a building because it doesn't have a roof and form protection for people, animals, or things, and so I, I think this is a simple reading of the bylaw. I don't think this case should be in front of you at all. I think to the extent that this fence is higher than the building code required, I think that Mr. Russo needs to go to the building inspector and apply for a building permit.
As he has, and we have, Ben. We have a letter from Victor explaining what we had to do, okay? So, I'm, I'm just following, I can't take somebody else's guidance on this. I have to deal. He says, he has to submit to the, um, submit to the Wealthy Board, Board of Appeals for Dimensional Variants to vary from the required setback.
I, I, all I'm saying is, I, I would ask the board to open up your bylaw and look at it, because your job is to interpret the bylaw.
Trust me, we have, many times.
I'd like to point out at this time, too, that this was just Victor's interpretation of how to allow an overheight fence.
Right.
And it seems like some of you are, are interpreting the fence as a structure, and therefore it's not a fence. It is a fence. This is the mechanism to allow that fence to be a foot taller than what it's allowed. And it seems like there's, we've gotten way off base here with, with, with that understanding, and people are using that as their, their justification to deny my request. So I-
Okay, Will. Okay, Mr. Russo, I hear you, and I'm gonna go to Mr. Sullivan for a minute.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I'm looking, I'm, after Ben talked about the definition, I went back to eight-point-four-point-three. And we're given the power to issue variances under eight-point-four-point-three. And, and I like to, you know, and, and it says that we're, we have the right to grant uh, variances under the terms of this bylaw. Not the building code, this bylaw.
Okay.
And then at the end, it talks about, uh, without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of this bylaw. You know, this by, bylaw makes no reference to the height of fences.
So do we throw it out?
No, I'm, I'm beginning to-
So in that case, I don't think, I don't think we're in a position to grant a variance. I think right here, we're in a position- My problem is, I don't think we're in a position to grant a variance. I think we're in a position to send it back to the building inspector. But I don't think we're in a position to grant a variance, because I don't think it meets the criteria for a variance, but you guys could outvote me if you'd like.
No, no, I'm saying we don't have the jurisdiction to hear this. We, we, our jurisdiction, I'd like to hear what Ben has to say about it, but our, our jurisdiction is under eight-point-four-point-
I don't wanna hear from Ben again.
Our jurisdiction is under eight-point-four-point-three.
Yeah.
And our jurisdiction says we can, we are entitled to amend the bylaw, then we can amend the bylaw. But a seven-foot fence or an eight-foot fence doesn't, to me anyway, appear in the bylaw.
Let me explain, let me read you what I get from the building inspector.
Oh, I don't care what you get from the building.
Okay, I, that's why we're here.
So many things where I think he's been asked backwards. I don't need to hear anything more from him.
Well, it's just that I don't, um,
Thank you, Will.
He says, I don't, I don't wanna put Mr. Russo into another runaround. And what, if, if you're saying, you know, it goes back to the building inspector.
Runaround, as long as like this is gonna be interpreted correctly, and we can all get on-
Mister, this is what Mr. Staley has to say. Mr. Russo must apply for a dimensional variance pursuant to Wealthy zoning bylaw eight-point-four-point-three, first attachment, to vary from the terms of the Wealthy zoning bylaw table five-point-four-point-two to allow a structure closer to a side property line than twenty-five feet. Whereas the proposed and existing fence is over seven feet in height from grade, the state building code, seven-eighty-C-M-R, then classifies this fence as a structure which deserves a building permit. The Wealthy Building Department cannot issue a building permit for this structure, fence over seven feet, because it doesn't satisfy the requisite yard setback for an R-one zoning district identified in Wealthy zoning bylaw table five-point-four-point-two. It's up to the applicant to satisfy all the criteria in Wealthy zoning bylaw eight-point-four-point-three upon the Board of Appeals findings.
So.
So, um, if you feel, if you feel that it does satisfy those, then you can, yes, you can grant the variance.
Well, thank you, Sharon. I, I, I would say the same thing. This, I, it wasn't my interpretation that brought us here tonight.
I know.
Victor's interpretation that brought us here. And I would like for you to go back and focus on the four criteria that I laid out earlier.
Okay, I'm gonna call on Jan. Yes, okay.
Just a couple things. Could, could we ask people not to speak until they're recognized? Cuz it becomes chaotic. How could, I, I, I'm suggesting, I, it's, I saw the definition of, of structure. But how could our definition, I, I'm not sure our definition is correct. How could our definition say that a fence isn't a structure if the, if the building code says it is? I mean, I, I'm not convinced that our, you know, there's so many sections of this bylaw that are outdated and-
You're right. Good question. Mr. Russo.
Well, in response to that, Jan, I would like to just point back again to the fact that Victor Staley, it's his interpretation that this is the process to grant my variance to build a fence a foot taller than that's what is, a foot taller than what's allowed.
Okay, okay. Anyone else? I'm gonna, I just wanna wait a minute. Mr. Miller.
Are, are we getting into a catch-twenty-two here? In other words, our definition, you know, doesn't, of structure doesn't suffice, and so it has to go back to the building inspector?
No, I don't think so, Al. I think the question here is, the question that Jan is raising is, Ben points out that our structure, our structure definition in the bylaw excludes a fence. However, the building code says that an eight-foot fence is a structure, and the building inspector has to go by the building code. So that is why the building inspector has classified this as a structure and sent it to us. So the question before us is really, are you convinced that this case makes the case for a variance or not? I think that's really where we are. Somebody correct me if you think I'm wrong on that. Trevor.
Sharon, I think that, I think that sounds like the correct interpretation of this. That in our bylaws, a structure is, a fence is not considered a structure, but a fence is also not defined in our bylaws. So I think we need to turn to the next best place for the definition of a fence, and I would say the next place, place for that is the state building code, which defines a fence as being under seven feet. So I think it's correct interpretation that if it's over seven feet, then it is no longer a fence, it becomes a structure, so that we're looking at a variance for a structure on the setbacks, essentially. I mean, not on the setbacks, on the property lines.
I, I, I-
Mr. Russo, I have not recognized you yet. Please wait until you're recognized. I want to hear from the board. Will.
Yeah, I mean, if I have to vote whether you've met the, whether the applicant has met the criteria for, for a variance, I'd say no. I guess I had, have that choice, because I, I, I really feel we don't have jurisdiction over the case. So, uh, but to move it along, I'll, I'll vote yay or nay when, when the vote's taken.
Thank you.
In, in any of that, oh-
Yes, Mr. Miller.
In, in any event, what we're talking about is one, a one-foot difference. In other words, um, it is perfectly fine to have a seven-foot fence on Mr. Russo's property. It's not on the property line, it's on his property, if I understand-
No, it is on the property line.
It's on my property.
Yeah, well, the map seems to show it as being on the property line, but, yeah.
Okay, well, uh, if, if it's, because I, I think that's, um, a consideration. If, if it, if it is on the property line, then, uh, you know, the neighbor has a point about, you know, shared costs and, you know, you know, some of the other objections, you know, that he raised. However, if it's on Mr. Russo's property, um, you know, I, I think that's, that's different. And I guess we can't tell, right? Or, I mean, is there some way of-
Well, look at the, look at the site plan and see what you think.
Can I, can I speak to this?
Yes, Mr. Russo, you may speak to that.
The fence is on my property. We stretched a string along the property boundary, and we kept it in over two inches on-
Two inches, okay.
That's the property line. If it was on the property line, the center line of the post would be on that string on the property line. It's not. It's an entire-
So it, so, so it is how far off from the neighbor's property?
Two inches. It's not on the property line.
Okay, so there's your answer, Mr. Miller. It's two inches from the property line.
Okay, so, but it, the, the, the basic thing is it's, it's on Mr. Russo's property in that case.
Exactly.
Yes.
And so-
I'd like to point out that, that, to me, this does feel like we're going into a catch-twenty-two.
Okay, um, Mr. Russo, I'm trying to move this along, so I think we have heard from you. So, Andy.
Yeah, Sharon, I, um, I keep reading the section of the building code. And I'm loath to be able to say that the building code says that a fence is a structure. I, I, I read this, and I've read it several times now. So maybe somebody could explain to me where they see that this building code defines, you know, characterizes a fence as a structure. There are, there are a lot of things that are regulated in this building code. They're not all structures.
Right. Not now.
Please, sir.
Enough.
If I, if I, I, I would like to understand from the building inspector why he thinks that a fence is a structure, or why he thinks the building-
Unfortunately, the building inspector is not on this call, and all we have is his letter to us saying that he is defining it as a structure.
Okay.
So I think the question before us has to be whether or not you're willing to grant the variance. I don't think we need to go continue down this, this considerate a structure because that's why it's before us, and decide whether or not you want to, you know, whether you think he's met the criteria for a variance. I think that's where we are.
I would-
Mr. Russo, I'm not talking to you right now.
Does not cover their tree falling on our house.
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know who you are, and I, you need to mute yourself, or else raise your hand and ask to be recognized.
There, it's a person labeled as Richard that needs to be muted.
Okay, I'll mute that person. Okay. I'm not a host, so Chris needs to meet them.
Yeah, Chris needs to.
Okay, Chris needs to mute, or this person needs to- Okay, Chris needs to mute, or this person needs to. So at any rate, that's where we are. The question before you is, do you want to grant this variance?
Well, I'll, to move things along, I'll make, I'll make a motion to go to findings and we can see how, who agrees and who doesn't.
Right. Okay, I need a second for that. I need a, I need a second. Okay, and all in favor, and I need the board for that. Trevor?
Hi.
Will?
Hi.
Rita?
Hi.
Al?
Hi.
And Sharon?
Hi.
Okay, these are the findings I have.
Sorry, who seconded? I didn't catch it.
Trevor?
Thank you.
Al beat me to it, actually.
That's okay.
Okay. Okay. This is an application for variance under Massachusetts general law, chapter forty A, section ten, Wellfleet zoning bylaw eight point four point three, to vary from the terms of the Wellfleet zoning bylaw table four point four, five point four point two, to allow a structure fencing closer to a side property line than 25 feet. The lot is in the R one district under the state building code seventy-eight C M R. A fence over seven feet is a structure which requires a building permit. The Wellfleet building department cannot issue a building permit for a structure which does not satisfy the requisite side yard setback. Under Wellfleet zoning bylaw eight point four point three, the applicant must apply for variance from the terms of the Wellfleet zoning bylaw table five point four point three, to allow a structure closer to the side property line than the required twenty-five-foot setback. There were two letters in support of the application and one letter opposed. There were no appearances in support and no appearances in opposition. To grant an appeal for the variance, the board must find that owing to circumstances relating to soil conditions, shape or topography of the land or structures, and specifically affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located, a literal enforcement of the provisions of this bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise to the petitioner, and that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. The board finds that there are no soil conditions, shape or topography that affect the property differently from other properties in the zoning district. The applicant states that his home and his neighbor's homes are above grade, but this is a condition that is common in the area. The board finds that there is no substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, that would be incurred by denial of this position. The board finds that desirable relief may not be granted without detriment to the public good. The addition of an eight-foot fence would block scenic views from neighbors and public ways. The intent of the bylaw is to prevent structures from being built within the setback. There needs to be, seems to be no compelling reason to make an exception here. That's what I have.
I'll move the findings.
You know, Sharon, I've got a problem with number nine.
Okay.
It says the intent of the bylaw
Yep.
is to prevent structure from being built within the setback. Well, by our own definition, fence is, is not a structure.
Don't go down that road. Do you want me to take, do you want me to take this one, take number nine out?
I just don't feel comfortable with, it's just not a structure.
But it's.
I mean, not as far as our bylaws concerned, and we're, we're responsible for our bylaw.
In number two, quoting the building code, I'm saying, or according to, under the state building code, a fence over seven feet is a structure.
Well, I haven't seen the building code. Yeah.
Given the confusion on this, on this, I'm.
Mr. Russo, right now, the hearing is closed from public comment. Mr. Mr. Russo, the hearing's been closed from public.
Vote on this when there's this type of confusion about such a basic issue.
Mr. Russo, I'm sorry, but once we go to findings, the public hearing is closed. So the question, Will, is would you like me to take that finding out?
Yes, I think if you took out nine, I, I can live with it.
Anybody else want to make any other changes? Hearing none? I need a proposal to accept the findings.
I'll move the findings.
Okay, and that was Trevor. I need a second. Okay. All right, we don't have a second, so. And I need someone to make an argument for other findings, I believe.
I believe the applicant might be interested in withdrawing.
Yes.
I've heard him say that.
Yeah.
We could.
We could go back to the applicant, close the pub, close the, go back to public hearing. Okay, we will.
You're muted, Mr. Russo.
Okay, I'm gonna reopen the public hearing for, to Mr. Russo. Mr. Russo would like to withdraw this application.
Given, given the confusion over this basic understanding and interpretation of what you're voting on, yes, I would like to withdraw.
Okay.
I don't feel like we're, we're on the same page here at all.
To, then I, I need a motion to allow the applicant to withdraw the application.
I, I so moved.
Okay, I need a second.
Second it.
Okay, all in favor. Will?
Aye.
Trevor?
Aye.
Rita?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
And Al?
Aye.
Okay, all right, that's where we'll leave it. Thank you, Mr. Russo. Okay. Moving on, twenty-two oh two Woods and Lemme regarding ten sixty-five State Highway, map six thirty-six, parcel one eighty-four, appeal from a person aggrieved Massachusetts general laws forty A, section eight and fifteen, and Wellfleet zoning bylaw eight point four point one, appeal of the building commissioner authorizing the use of the site for a contractor's yard. Appeal is to reverse the decision or modify the use conditions approved in order to fully conform to the bylaw and earlier decisions of the board. And the board for this case was Mick, Sharon, Jan, Manny, and Andy, and will continue such. And when we adjourned for this, when we allowed the continuation, the continuation was to allow the parties to work out a solution. They did not, and we were considering at that point that we would, were they not able to work out a solution that we would refer this to the conservation commission for further study? So they have not worked out a solution. And so we are back, and I guess since Mr. Reed is the applicant, I would like to hear from Mr. Reed first.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Yes, we did, we did meet at the site, Zender and I, and discussed some changes to the site plan, changes which are reflected in the draft plan that I believe he filed with you yesterday. We also attempted to discuss other operational details. We narrowed it down to specifics that would, that I felt would, would really warrant any further delay, and that would have any reasonable possibility resulting in a resolution that was satisfactory to my clients as well as to the board. So we're back tonight to address the merits of the appeal. Mr. Zender has, as I indicated, submitted to you a revised plan, intending that it would take the property down below the threshold for a mandatory development of regional impact referral. I don't know whether that satisfies that standard or not. It, it, on the surface seems to, but I think, as we discussed last time, there are already site changes that exceed the amount that he's presently proposing as the project area. However, in discussing it with my clients, we feel that the local impacts of this business use are far more important, far more relevant than the regional impacts might be. And if it is possible for you to retain jurisdiction and not feel compelled to refer it immediately to the commission, we would like to go forward and have you address those local concerns, the local impacts. If, if that is, was still within your jurisdiction, we would like to go forward and address the merits of this appeal.
So you would like to go forward with it on, on the basis of the appeal rather than on the, rather than the commission?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And I suppose. Now, we have. I'm sorry.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Mr. Zender would like to answer.
Do you mind if I, do you mind if I just weigh in on Mr. Reed's request?
No, don't mind at all.
I, I actually think it's a good request, and, and the reason for that is, although Mr. Reed and I didn't get to the point of an agreement, and, and we may get there, I'm not sure, we're, we kind of stalled a little bit. It's my client's intention, no matter what, to get the total project area down below forty thousand square feet. Now, what I've presented to the board for review, and I apologize that it wasn't stamped, it's just, it's a function of just the very short period of time we had. We were able to prepare a plan, but to get a surveyor to actually confirm the calculations and stamp that plan requires some onsite work as well as just doing something on a drafting board, so we just weren't able to get that in time. But I wanted to get to you and to Mr. Reed, a plan showing what we were intending, understanding that if the surveyor does not confirm that this total project area is under forty thousand square foot, we would further reduce it. So what I would ask, and I think it's consistent with Mr. Reed's request, is that we be allowed to continue to work with a building inspector, who can work with your town council and also with, you know, the chief regulatory officer of the commission to confirm that the project doesn't meet the mandatory requirements. But that I would ask also, as Mr. Reed has, that this board address the, address the, you know, the definitional question of whether in fact it's a contractor's yard. Thank you.
Okay. All right.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, yes.
Before we begin, I don't know about everybody else, but I have an issue with considering a plan that was sent to us twenty, twenty-four hours before this meeting, less than twenty-four hours perhaps, maybe a little more. It was supposed to be in our packets. I'm, I'm really unhappy about that.
So hurt, yes. And, and, and as Ben pointed out, difficult to read.
And it's not stamped, and it's not dated, and it's not signed.
Yeah. So. Okay, um, I have, I think between Jan and I, we have twenty-one letters to hear on this subject, if we are going to go forward with the merits of the appeal. And I think there are people in the audience who would like to speak to the merits of the appeal. So I would assume that I would go next to the audience, and then to the extent that people in the letters are not in the audience, we would go to the letters, so. If you would like to write, please don't speak until I acknowledge you, and please raise your hand if you would like to speak. Mr. Charney? You have to unmute yourself and state your name.
Derek, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, my, you know, my, my name is Lou Wise, Harry to Amy Charney. But I've kept my maiden name, so. I'm Lou Wise. As I said, I'm Lou Wise and my wife is Amy Charney, and we live, we live, we have a home at forty-one Sea Oaks Way. And if you're not familiar with Old Wharf Road, it's the first right after Wicksum Lane. So we're quite close, the project area, and will certainly feel of, of this development if it goes forward. I would just like to, I'm, I'm a land use lawyer myself in Connecticut, and I would just like to focus my comments on your bylaws, and some that may repeat what you've heard from Attorney Reed already, but I think it's really important, and I, and I've, you know, as I've looked through your, your bylaws, it seems to me that the issue here is really rather easily resolved. It's just a matter of seeing on those bylaws. And I'd like to start with section five point two of your, of your zoning bylaws, which is captioned permitted uses. And the, the introduction to that, to that section, and, and by the way, this section applies to all uses, whether they are permitted uses or whether they are special permit uses. And what it says, the introductory paragraph, says that permitted uses and uses authorized under small permits shall be in conformity with the provisions of section five-three. That's the, the graph on all the different uses. And this is the key part, and shall not be detrimental or offensive or tend to reduce property values in the same or adjoining districts by reason of dirt, dust, glare, odor, fume, smoke, gas, sewage, refuse, noise, vibration, danger of explosion of, or fire, traffic, and traffic congestion. I would, I mean, I think it's quite obvious to, 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 to all of us that the operation that's being proposed here would certainly result in some of those detrimental impacts, including noise, vibration, dirt, dust, et cetera. And so, and again, I want to emphasize that that language applies to all permitted uses, whether permitted uses standing alone or special permit uses. So even though a use may be permitted, as Attorney Zender tells us, contractor yards are permitted, even if they're permitted, that language applies. Because permitted you, the, the, the town has made it quite clear in its bylaws that even if a, even if a use is permitted, if it results in those types of impacts, it cannot be approved. And so I, I would respectfully suggest that the building official did not take that paragraph in five point two. He did not take that into account, and for that reason, I believe that the permit should not have been approved. And, and of course, we all know, I think, that given the industrial nature of the proposed application, and the, 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 and the fact that the operation is going to include huge trucks and, and other industrial-type machinery, that there really is no way to ensure that those detrimental impacts don't occur. The next bylaw section I really want to focus on, well, let me, let me put it this way, we, let me start this way. I want to look at one of the key components of the proposal here, and the key component, of course, has to do with the piles of sand and stone and loam and, and the like, which the applicant proposes to store on site. The applicant contends that, this is a contractor's yard, he says, and your bylaw on contractor's yard allows, quote, supplies to be, to be stored, I guess, on site. And so the applicant suggests that these bulk materials that are gonna be piled up on the property, that they are the same as supplies. They're, they're, for a contractor's yard, these are supplies. However, if you take a look at section five point three point three of your bylaws, they list bulk storage as a completely separate use, and it's a special permit use. And bulk storage is defined as exposed outside storage of sand, lumber, coal, or other bulk materials. Now, that's exactly what this application calls for, the outdoor storage of bulk materials. So there's no question that the application called for or, or, or required a special permit in order to approve. To say that bulk storage can be part of a contractor's yard, because there's some, they're, 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 quote, supplies, would result in the bulk storage bylaw being read right out of the bylaws. It would, it would be rendered meaningless. But your bylaws treat that as a separate use and a special permit use. So once again, the building official wound up, I believe, approving an application. I believe, approving an application that was beyond his authority to, to grant because it, uh, it required a special permit use from, from, uh, special approval of, from, from you guys, I think. Um. And, and, and this point I'm making is really crucial to this case because the central to the op, to the operation which is being proposed is the ability to load these bulk materials, uh, onto the huge trucks that are going to, um, uh, deliver the, the materials to various job sites on the Cape. And then to use these same trucks again to deliver new materials to the, to, to the so-called contractor's yard. And these are precisely the activities which are the, of the noise and vibrations and, uh, fumes and odors and, 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 and other, you know, detrimental impacts this operation is, is going to produce. Um, the bylaws therefore prohibit the use of this property for bulk storage without a special permit, something that the building official, I believe, uh, ignored or overlooked. And the final bylaw I want to focus on um, is section 6.7. And section 6.7, uh, is captioned commercial, industrial and general, general use standards. And I'm just going to read the first sentence to you. It says, "No activity, no activity shall be permitted in any district of the town unless its operation is conducted so that any noise, vibrations, flashing cinders, dust, fumes, gases, odors, smoke, radiation and electromagnetic interference can be and are effectively confined to the premises." Confined to the premises. The noise has to be confined to the premises. There was, the, the, the building official obviously had no, uh, evidence that those detrimental impacts were going to be confined, uh, to the, to the property. Uh, and, and again, I think we all know that it would be impossible to confine those impacts, especially impacts like noise. It's, it would be possible to confine them, uh, to the, to the premises. So the building official should not have issued this permit without such evidence. And, uh, it's very doubtful that that type of evidence or that could ever, ever be produced. So I just wanted to, to, to point out to the board again that the answer to this, to these issues that are raised by this application are contained right in the rather clear language, I think, of the bylaws. And I really don't think this is a very complicated issue. To summarize, the board, the building officials should not have issued the permit because under your bylaws, first of all, this is not a contractor's yard. And second of all, even if it is, the language I read to you before that even, even permitted uses are not, uh, cannot be approved if they produce all the detrimental impacts that are listed, uh, in that section. So we, and when I say we, uh, we have a group of, of, I think over a hundred households that are participating, um, and in, in opposition, uh, to this application or to the support of this appeal now. Um, and we ask you to, uh, please uphold our appeal because the issuance of the permit violates several of your rather clear bylaws. Thank you very much for your time.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Wise. I, I think actually we kind of took a wrong turn there.
Yes, okay.
Before going to the public, we haven't really made our presentation yet as to why we think the permit was wrongfully issued.
Okay.
And I'd like to back up just a little bit if I can.
Okay, I did not realize you were not done. I apologize.
I thought I was being recognized because.
You were being recognized on, because I thought Mr. Reed was finished and had made his case, made his proposal to us. So, but go right ahead, Mr. Reed.
David, you can now correct me.
No, no, I mean, you said it's correct. Uh, uh, I, I just think, I don't remember exactly who the board was last April, but it may be worth just taking a step back and, and explaining how we got to where we are today. You will recall that last spring, the building commissioner issued a cease and desist order to this property owner for having essentially clear cut most of the site. Uh, and, and in preparation for commencing this contractor's yard use, without having gotten a change of use permit from the building department, which he was required to do. Uh, and, and he so ruled. And in addition, he, he demolished large percentages of the perimeter, uh, vegetation. Notwithstanding the fact that the bylaw requires that the buffers, uh, shall be maintained through existing vegetation whenever possible. And that was destroyed by the clear cutting of the site. So that resulted in two appeals to you from the building commissioner's rulings on the cease and desist and from his determination that their intended storage and processing of, of sand and gravel and loam uh, required special permits as open bulk storage and his industrial use for the processing portion and as well as a special permit for having multiple uses on a single lot. After a lengthy hearing, you denied both of the appeals from the building commissioner's determinations and you deny the applications for those three special permits, finding that they did not meet the criteria. They did not meet the standards for the district or the, the stand, the qualitative standards that Mr. Wise just outlined in the three other provisions of the bylaw. I, the applicant appealed those decisions and those are still pending in the land court. And to my knowledge, there's been no decision by any judge saying that anything you determined was wrong. Uh, it is clear that the appellate, the applicant and property owner intends to pursue those appeals and intends to seek a determination from the land court that inherent in a contractor's yard is the accumulation of materials and supplies and raw materials such as sand and gravel and loam in his case. But that has not been decided yet. In the meantime, the applicant went back to the building commissioner, or now to the interim building commissioner, Mr. Staley, uh, and, and essentially reapplied for almost the same thing as what they had before, in our opinion. And, and through a series of meetings and, and conferences and exchanges of emails and correspondence, uh, with no formal application that I can determine per se, uh, the building commissioner, the interim building commissioner issued a, an email on the November of last year approving the use of the site for contractor's yard right now, notwithstanding that the appeals hadn't been resolved. And he imposed some conditions on that. Uh, and there was further correspondence back from Mr. Zender clarifying some of the questions the building commissioner had as to what they intended to do and how they were going to do it. And, and off they went. It, it's our contention that, that there is not sufficient distinction between what you rejected last April and what's currently applied for and permitted by this approval, uh, to allow it to go forward absent a reversal of your decision by the land court. Now, there is no formal application, as I said, to you for, I mean, excuse me, to the building commissioner for this use. I can't find among the correspondence any narrative description of exactly what they wanted to do, what the parameters of what they wanted to do are. But we can glean most of that from the materials that are available. Where there is a site plan, the, the original, original site plan and now a revised site plan. The original site plan is almost indistinguishable from the one that you rejected last April. But it calls for open storage areas for, uh, supplies and materials. It provides a vague area for the parking of the equipment and the vehicles, uh, but, but, but nothing much more of any substance. There is a, a list of vehicles provided in the correspondence from Mr. Zender, me, vehicles and equipment. The same 13 types of vehicles that were before you last April, the same list, including very heavy equipment, uh, multi-wheeled, uh, dump trucks, excavators, front end loaders, including some which are on tracks and treads, not on wheels, despite the fact that the definition of a contractor's yard only allows for the parking of wheeled equipment, not treads and tractor trailer, uh, type, a tractor type, uh, vehicles which are included on this list. There is now on the plan before you a list of the supplies and materials that they intend to use. 18 different categories of materials that they're going to store somewhere outdoors on this site. And they've designated three areas generally where they're going to put all this stuff. But there's no description of how much of each and how many of each and how many, how big the piles are going to be of each of these types of materials. We're left to guess about that. We do however, have a letter from Mr. Zender to the building commissioner in response to his approval, his approval letter dated, uh, November 15th, 2021. And it's in the package that we submitted to you. Indicated that he does intend to store, quote, "non-bulk material supplies, including sand, gravel and topsoil." And that's apparently approved by the building commissioner with no clarification of how much of each, how big the piles are going to be, how often they're going to arrive and what they're going to do with them when they get there. There's also a subsequent email exchange with the building commissioner where Mr. Zender indicates and confirms, and the building expect, inspector acknowledges that the building, uh, that the contractor intends to store on site some number of large concrete blocks that they're going to use at their sites and stack them up somewhere on the site here until they need them elsewhere. I don't understand how that in, in, in accumulation is not still bulk storage comma open under the definition. As Mr. Wise indicated earlier, the definition of that use is exposed outside storage of sand, lumber, coal, or other bulk materials or supplies. I doubt very much that, that, uh, Mr. Morris is going to have just one of each of those items of, of, uh, supplies and merchandise and, and equipment. Uh, so there's some bulk to all of them. I doubt very much the sand, gravel and loam is going to be in consumable sized containers. So that to me is bulk storage of those materials until they're needed elsewhere. I don't see what's different from, from now, from what you rejected last April, other than the fact that he has physically removed the huge piles of sand and gravel that were there during the excavation and has replaced the topsoil with the permission of the building commissioner to try and replicate what was there before. The issue of how much of those materials can be stored and where is pending before the land court. And it's not appropriate to go ahead and issue a permit to do substantially the same thing as you rejected before until and unless the court makes a decision saying that you were incorrect. It shouldn't have been authorized in, in even a lesser volume, if that is in fact the case, until that law appeal is resolved. I agree with the comments of Mr. Wise, Attorney Wise, that this type of use does not meet the definition of the commercial district. The commercial district, as you pointed out before, is intended to host small and moderate sized local businesses which will preserve and enhance, among other things, the landscaping and the views and protect the views from the public of the stored equipment and vehicles on the site. They certainly have not improved or enhanced or preserved the natural vegetation that was the buffer there before. They stripped it clean. And I would suggest that this is not a small or moderate business, nor is it for that matter, a local business. The business is out of Dennis. This is a satellite location where they're going to store this equipment while they service their local clientele. And I don't believe that they satisfy the qualitative requirements and limitations of section 5.2 and 6.7. But I think it was pretty clear before and from the correspondence that I believe you receive now that there already are experiences as well as grave concerns for a vibration impact on residential neighbors which are just across the fence from this property. And for noise and dust and odors from this business. Every one of these big pieces of equipment, I believe, will have those OSHA required backup beepers that sound every time they shift into reverse. And when you have heavy excavators and front end loaders loading and unloading dump trucks full of these materials, that's going to create a lot of noise and a lot of fumes and a lot of vibration that is certainly going to impact these neighbors. I would ask you to look at the site plan, either one, and the photographs that we've provided. And you will, you will note that there is an area where they've left the trees and vegetation sort of in the middle of the site, maybe, maybe the northerly third of the site. But if you look at the site plan and kind of overlay that in your own mind on the, the photographs that you've got and, and you will see that those remaining trees also have to be removed because they're right in the middle of what he's labeled as, as proposed storage areas for vehicles and for materials. So they propose to have a five-foot perimeter buffer planted with Leland cypresses at about 15-foot intervals. And according to their landscaping expert, those will meet up, touch each other in about seven years. And in 10 to 12 years will form an effective visual hedge for this property. So what's this neighborhood supposed to do in the meantime, over the next 12 years? Suffer from the exposure of this activity? This storage of equipment and trucks and, and materials in a place where it's not supposed to be? That doesn't seem right. Now it is true, as the building commissioner pointed out, that section 6.12.1 does provide that as a standard, that when you are planting new vegetation, it must be sufficient so that the, the crowns will touch at maturity. But that's not all that it requires. That's this, that's the alternate buffer. The, the, the initial premise of section 6.12.1 is that the border areas between storage and parking and the lot lines shall be vegetated through the retention of existing trees and plants. And it's disingenuous for the applicant, for the, the business owner here to try and rely on the alternative of providing new vegetation, sparse vegetation, when they themselves are the ones that destroyed the natural vegetation in the first place. There, there's, they're under an order to abate and, I mean, assuming to cease and desist and abate their unlawful stripping of the vegetation from the perimeter of the site. This isn't abating it, it's rewarding it. It's allowing them to get away with the removal of trees and plants that should have been retained and to replace them with, with a almost worthless buffer for the next seven to 10 or 12 years. Chapter 48, section 14 is the operative section that deals with your authority tonight. And when it comes to these appeals, it says, and I'll quote, "In the exercise of the powers granted to this, to the board of appeals under this section, the board may make orders or decisions, may reverse or affirm in whole or in part, or may modify any order or decision. And to that end, shall have all the powers of the officer from whom the appeal was taken." You are the building commissioner, the zoning enforcement officer tonight. We are asking you to revoke this permission, this permit to allow a contractor's yard at this site and to immediately order the cease and desist of any further contractor's yard activities on this property unless and until your previous decisions are reversed or modified by the land court. You have that authority and that's what we believe you should do tonight. Now, with respect to Mr. Staley, I'd like to acknowledge a couple of things before you, before I conclude. I've known Victor Staley for many years. Uh, I respect him and I think he's actually one of the best building commissioners around and you're, you're lucky to have him helping you out in this time, in this transition period for you. But in this particular instance, my belief is that he came to you at a time when the building department was in turmoil, where he had a backlog of applications that needed to be addressed. And he was not part of the earlier decisions as you were. And then I fear, I think, that he simply took this application, this reapplication at face value and perhaps with a little too much trust in what the applicant was asking for and didn't look at it as deeply as we're asking you to. You have the past experience with this site and with this particular business and with this neighborhood. And you have the opportunity to hear both sides of the story, not just the applicant's wishes and intentions. And we're asking you to review it in light of not just the use table that has a capital P next to contractor's yard, but the rest of the bylaw that defines what types of contractor's yards are intended in this commercial zone and what kinds of activities within a contractor's yard are permitted, in this case, in proximity to a residential neighborhood and a major highway. And based upon all that, we are asking you to see this for what it really is in terms of its impact upon the town and, in particular, this adjoining residential neighborhood. And on that basis, we feel strongly, and a request of you, that you exercise your full authority to revoke this permit and to stop this operation unless and until your decisions are reversed by the land court. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reed. Mr. Zender, would you like to respond to that before I go back to the audience?
No, Madam Chair, I'll reserve comment.
Okay, fine. Is there Ms. Brown?
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I will be brief. And my focus is not on legal matters. My name is Helena Brown. We have a home at sixty-five East Wind Circle. We've been there for about thirty years and love that land. What I see is that if this operation is permitted, this will be indefinitely into the future endless problem of the, of this business. Whatever the permit says, they will always go beyond and above what they are allowed to do and put everybody, the, the town and the neighborhood before the fat data complete and say, what are you going to do about it? There will be calls, there will be letters, there will be town inspectors coming, and this is, this is our future with this new name. Now, how do I know that? I know that because I've been watching their behavior in the last year, which, which is very clear, tells us everything we want to know about this business. They, they cannot be trusted with complying with the, with the conditions of the permit. Just look how they began, how they arrived at this neighborhood. In the middle of the night, without a permit, over a weekend, when no, no one was watching, they just came and destroyed, didn't just cut, destroyed this piece of beautiful forest, right, in this area. They clearly they cannot be, a complete disregard for the natural environment. There is this wedge of land between Route Six and Old Wharf Road, which is of no use for contractors yet. It's of no use for the trucks, for anything that they planning to do there. And yet, they destroyed every last tree on that little wedge of land. It was, it was something so merciless about it that I just can't put my head around it, right? So are they going to show any regard in the future for the land? Of course not. They already showed us what their attitude is. Three, they show complete disregard for the, for the neighborhood. Over the last year, since they were first told to cease and desist, and the neighborhood rebelled against what they were planning to do there, they had so many opportunities to show some sort of a goodwill toward the neighborhood, but they didn't. All they did, all they do is try to use every legal maneuver that they can find to get, to get their way. Look at this. They proposed these every fifteen feet, planting trees. They know that it's not going to provide a buffer. They know that we know that it's not going to provide the buffer. And yet, with a straight face, they say, that's what we propose to do, right? There is cynicism in this whole behavior. I, I just can't believe the behavior of this firm. So in short, what I want to say is this. The burden of pro is on them, that they're not going to be a nuisance, that they're not going to turn this piece of beautiful land, what was, once was beautiful land, into an industrial zone. They had a year to demonstrate, to prove it, and they failed, in my opinion. So what I am urging you respectfully is to revoke the permit and finish this charade once and for all. They just, they not a good neighbor, they will never be a good neighbor, and there will be a problem for the town and for the neighborhood into indefinite future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. All right. Mr. Timas, you need to unmute yourself and identify yourself.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this night, tonight, Madam Chairman.
State your name again for the, for the secretary.
My name is Donald Themis. I grew up in Southwell Fleet, not too far from the site. I am actually a resident of Florida now, but I do have property in Southwell Fleet, actually across from existing contractor's yards. So I know what contractor's yards are and what impact they have and what they benefit, how they benefit the town. I wrote a brief note to, I had sent to Jerry Perrant, the planning board, because they were discussing contractor's yards as well. But I also got, had it sent to zoning board of appeals, and I'd like to, although it's in one of your letters, I hope, take an opportunity to read it and just preface it by saying, this might be going back to basics, but I think it's an important thing to consider.
Do you, yes, would you read your letter, Mr. Timas? I don't think we have it.
Oh, okay.
It must have come in at the very last.
Okay. This is addressed to Jerry Perrant. For the planning board's recent discussions on contractor's yards prompted me to check a few definitions. The zoning bylaws, bylaws definition of contractor's yard is, quote, "Contractor's yard- premises used by a building contractor or subcontractor principally for storage of equipment and supplies, fabrication of sub-assemblies, or parking of wheeled equipment," unquote. The definition of premises by Webster's is, quote, "A house or building together with its land and outbuildings occupied by a business or considered in an official context." This is my comment. I think the use of, quote-unquote, premises in the bylaws is important since premises specifically identify a house or building. The development on Route Six by Old Wharf Road does not contain a house or a building. Therefore, it does not satisfy the definition of a contractor's yard. I do not think a vacant piece of land should be considered a premises and qualify it to be a contractor's yard. And then I mentioned, that's my two cents. I think the writers of the definitions in the bylaws were conscious of that, then made a specific use of the word premises. They didn't say a lot or a plot or, and I think they were thinking that a contractor's yard would contain the contractor's house or office and his work as opposed to being just a remote location for work. It was a way to allow builders, electricians, whatever, to have a place with a piece of property, a home or an office. It allowed them to do work, and it wasn't, I have, it wasn't necessarily a commercial zoned operation. And a lot of this ties back to the development of the C-two district, which is, has a lot of, a number of contractor's yards. So I think one of the basic questions is, does this satisfy the definition of a contractor's yard at all? And I don't think it does. That's, as I said, that's my two cents.
Thank you very much. Okay. Do I have anyone else from the audience who wishes to speak? Do not see any hands.
There's a hand.
I'm sorry, I'm not seeing it. Tell me where it is.
Mr. Sean.
Oh, Mr. Brown, Mr. Brown, yes, okay. Mr. Brown, would you unmute yourself and identify yourself for us?
Certainly. Hi, my name is Sean Brown. My home is at one-twenty East Wind Circle. I am no relation to Helena, although I share many of her concerns. I, you know, I've been at East Wind Circle now for eight years. And I, I just want to reiterate the concerns that have already been raised by my neighbors and to say that the combination of noise, vibration, dust, the environmental risk that had been raised at, at prior meetings, in some cases, those things can hit the water supply and other potential negative impact to the surrounding homes and the owner's enjoyment thereof, all really make this a very, seem, seem, a clear case that we should not, you know, proceed with this, this use of, of this, of this land, especially after it had been mowed down in the fashion that it had, and nearly undercover of darkness. So I just want to thank you for the time and, and to, again, express my severe concerns, very, very severe reservations about, about this potential use. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Ms. Lemmy. And you have to unmute, Ms. Lemmy. Ms. Lemmy, would you like to speak? You have your hand up. Okay. Dean Noe. Mr. Petraselli, I believe, has his hand up. You'd have to unmute, Mr. Petraselli.
Yes, thank you very much. I live at two fifteen.
And state your name for, state your name for this, for the clerk, please.
Okay, yes, I'm Jeffrey Petraselli. I live at two fifteen Gosling in Southwell Fleet. I previously lived at ten fifty Ridge Street in Southwell Fleet, off of Old Wharf Road for thirty-five years, before living at Gosling for the last five years. So I've been in the neighborhood of Old Wharf Road for forty years and have enjoyed Old Wharf Road and the Bay and Southwell Fleet very much. And to my great surprise, in early January of two thousand and twenty, I think it was, going back then, we drove by Old Wharf Road and Route Six and saw the decimation of a lot that was, had vegetation grown on it for years and years and years and was quite surprised and shocked by the total destruction and contacted the building department to find out if there was a building permit, and we were told that there was not. And we've been concerned about this since that destruction and have followed in these meetings. And I agree with the points made by Attorney Reed and Attorney Wise. But one thing that's been left out by those attorneys, and I hope the zoning board of appeals can take this into account, is that the developer has not restored the vegetation where it was taken down, and there's been a total loss to the neighborhood of, of the trees surrounding that, that site and the, the, the wildlife that used to go through there. And that, I'm hoping that if the zoning board will agree that there should be a cease and desist order, there should also be a positive order to restore the vegetation and not to the level that they're proposing, to take twelve or fifteen years, but to do it in a couple of years. I think you have that authority to do that, and it would be very helpful to have that restored. And then if they can build a contractor's yard in the future, they have to maintain the vegetation surrounding the perimeter while they use the contractor's yard in the future. But they're going to have to change all of that to meet the, the requirements of what a contractor's yard should be. And I do hope you take both steps. So thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Morgan. Mr. Morgan, you have to unmute.
Hi, I'm Mr. Morgan. I live at Area Lane, sixty, Area Lane, and off Old Wharf Road, and I agree with the previous speakers. I just wanted to put in my voice that I was shocked too when I found out and saw with my own eyes the, the stripping of the land. And every time I come home from Orleans area and I come up to my street, it's just a big vacant nothing, and it used to be like a little entrance into the forest. And you felt like you came off of Route Six, that you were entering a little forest, and then it drove a little turn, and then I would be home, and you felt like you were getting away, the hustle and bustle and the traffic, and everything. And they, they, they just stripped that down without even any permission, and I think that's crime. That's not, that's not a zoning board thing, that's just a crime. And I, I was very angry about that, and I think regardless of what happened, I agree with the previous speakers that they should pay for restoring it, the vegetation there, as if they had vandalized.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. And Ms. Lemmy, you had your hand up before. Do you?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, I can hear you.
Yes.
And state your name for the, for the clerk, please.
Patricia Lemmy. And I am what I would consider an abutter to this land. And going back to Attorney Wise and Attorney Reed, the disturbance of neighbors is already happening. They were there today, and my house was shaking, my dogs were barking. It's very loud and the vibration in my home. I've had my dishes rattling and my floors jumping up and down. It's not how I expected to live in my own home. So disturbing of neighbors is already in progress. So I just wanted to let you know that point of view.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Mr. Iacusa.
Yes.
And again, state your name for the clerk, please.
William Iquesta, two oh six Old Wharf Road. I was passing by today at ten sixty-five and noticed quite a view of, of activity. I stopped and I took a number of pictures, which I submitted to you. I don't know if you saw them, but I do, just as a point of interest, there was a mention of concrete blocks to be stored on the property. Well, there was a truckload of concrete blocks in one of the photos that I sent. And they're just moving right along, doing their thing and ignoring everything else. I hope you rule favorably and stop what's going on there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, we, we do have a number of letters. If I don't see any other hands, we have a number of letters.
There's a Mr. Rose.
Okay, Mr. Rose. Not seeing Mr. Rose. Mr. Rose.
It's dark.
You, you're muted. There you go.
Mr. Rose, state your name for the clerk, please.
My name is Peter Rose. I'm here with my wife, Hetty. We've lived off Old Wharf Road for fifty-two years. We're on Cypress, the Zender, first Zender Building, Ben's father built, the shoebox some of you know. And I want to just And I want to just add our great concerns for what's been happening there. And I also want to tell you that the morning of the destruction, I was walking up there, I think the morning after, and there was a young woman who was surveying the thing at that time. The trees had all been taken down and she said, oh, we're just getting ready for uh big changes here. And I said, who are you working for? She said, I don't know. But this was planned long in advance, it seems to me, and they were ready to just go in there. Guerrilla warfare. And I I I feel that the destruction of those trees of the neighborhood and especially what's happening on the road directly behind that is unconscionable. And I urge the committee, your your board, to turn this back and not to accept it any longer.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Okay. Al, you're my spotter. So do you see anyone?
Mr. Flaxman.
Mr. Flaxman, yes.
Alan Flaxman, my wife wrote and I lived at 400 Old Wharf Road. I came to this meeting a little late, so I hope I'm not repeating something. I think that at this point, the people, the poor people who live right behind this this um this establishment, how are they ever going to sell their homes? What's going to happen to any value that they have in these homes? If they want to move away, nobody's going to want to buy anything there. So this all the other points that have been made, I agree with. But how about the real estate values and the effect on people's investments in their savings? I think they're going to be decimated.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Anyone else? So I um we have a number of letters and of course, the hour is getting late and we will have to begin to discuss this soon. Jan, I wonder if what you could do is um identify the writers and basically summarize the points that they are making and then we will all the letters that we got become part of the public record. So um you will, you will be heard. Um, but I think that might be one way to to move this along. Jan, you're muted.
I I was just gonna say, Sharon, it's not always so easy to do on the fly.
I know it's not. I know it is not.
Ahead of time.
Yeah, I know. I'm sorry.
I I'd like to read the, it's not that long, the letter from uh the National Park Service from.
Yes, please, please do.
He's not here?
I do not, I do not believe so. So go ahead and read that one.
Uh, January 13th, 2022, uh, Dumezinger. We are writing as an abutter in support of several other abutters appeal regarding Great White Realities uh in Prince's GWR use of 1065 State Highway Route Six in Wellfleet, Mass. The contractor's yard that was authorized by the acting building inspector is not dissimilar to the prior property use proposals that were denied by the zoning board of appeals. Uh, we wonder how condition three of the building inspector's email of November 10, 2021 is to be assured in the long term. This is particularly concerning, given the site plan showing storage of bulk sand and gravel materials and equipment and vehicle parking and accompanying information provided on GWR's behalf in October and November correspondence by the attorney's office that seem incompatible with the condition, including a list of 15 trucks and heavy equipment. The proposed non-native tree buffers will be insufficient for the intensity of this use and the scenic character of the previous vegetation buffers that existed at the site. We hope that the ZBA will uphold town zoning bylaws in consideration of the heavy vehicle traffic, neighborhood compatibility, and intensive character of the proposed uses. Sincerely, Brian Karstrom, Superintendent.
Okay, yeah.
We also have a a letter from Laura Kozak who is on Wickson, which is right behind. And I think.
Yes, read that one as well.
This has some different, yeah. Okay, first of all, I would like to start off by asking a question. Was the interim building inspector aware of or informed about the building inspector's decision that the zoning board of appeals vetoed it and the cases in Land Court? None of the abutters were notified about plans for the property in January 2021 or in November when the interim building inspector approved the plan for use of a contractor's yard on November 2021. This fall, I saw two of their trucks exiting the property with cleanup. They made left-hand turn and uh and traffic came to a standstill. This load could be lighter than what they usually haul and some of their equipment is larger in scale. This section is congested already with all the curb cuts, entrance to the national seashore and traffic going from two lanes to one on each side of the light. This industry will increase the traffic danger. Uh, the plant submitted is so much larger than what they wanted to do originally. I find it hard to imagine so many vehicles in that size range there. Right now, we can see them from Old Wharf and Wickson. I wonder if any fence can hide some of their heightened sides. I encourage people to drive by their site in Truro and South Dennis to see for themselves. Also, at both of these sites, they operate out of an office with the foundation already on site. I feel that um that is something else in the project. Uh, traffic on our private road and that should be by that Wickson will be impacted. It is dirt and only one lane. We feel that it will become more of a shortcut from Route Six to Old Wharf to avoid the site and traffic backup. Already, it is difficult to get out at some at times. An increase in traffic will definitely have an impact on us and our quality of life. Noise is something we hear every time they are there. Trucks backing up and beeping, tailgates being dropped or raised and vehicles being run. Having lunch in my living room and with the TV on, I could still hear work going on. A neighbor farther down the street has even had to turn up her radio. People have even had dishes rattling in their homes. I do not see any way noise will not come from this industrial site and noise pollution is a serious factor for people. How possible uh is it going to be to sell with this? Who would want it? Our property values will never recover. Uh, I also have concerns for VR's restaurant and the South Wellfleet motel. Uh, their noise will be impacted at breakfast as well as dinner since they open at four. Who will patronize the motel if they're going to hear the noise in the morning and all the time? Uh, both businesses have been run for decades by the same families. Lots of our concerns still remain from the last meeting with the Board of Appeals. When will we ever be able to open our windows again? Soil and air pollution, impact on our wells, water runoff, diesel fuel leakage causing ground contamination and quality of life. Will they be bringing in clean uh cleanup from sites they are working on? And how will we know if it is sorry, contaminated or not? I do not want uh to repeat safety on Route Six, Old Wharf and Wickson from traffic delays. Uh, the town of zoning bylaw section 5.2 states that uses are identified as identified are allowed to occur yet shall not become offensive or tend to reduce surrounding property values due to dust, refuse, noise, and other potential effects to the neighborhood. You don't choose the Cape, the Cape chooses you, she is.
Thank you. All right, well, why don't I read a couple and and give you a break? And then you can that'll give you a chance to summarize perhaps. Of course, that is soon. I have letters from Ms. Lemmy and from the Flaxmans that have have already spoken. I also have letters. A letter from Ms. Brown, who has already spoken. This one is from Mr. Samasco. I own the property at 1118 State Highway located across Route Six from the proposed contractor's yard to be owned by Great White Realty, GWR, and operated by GFM Enterprises, an excavation company. The proposed use of the property by GFM will have a direct negative effect on the use and enjoyment of my property and its value. I am an experienced architect having practiced for over 40 years with offices in Chatham and Beverly. My work includes advocacy for thoughtful property development and the rights of property owners to make productive use of their land. I am the furthest thing from a NIMBY. I feel my concerns and those of my neighbors are reasonable and well-founded, given this specific site and specific type of use. When I originally purchased my property, also zoned commercial, I reviewed the zoning bylaws allowable use regulations. I was comfortable with the variety of potential commercial uses which could be made of the vacant wooded lot across the street now owned by GWR and the subject of this appeal. Any retail, office, residential use allowed by right would be acceptable to me. I would not object to a well-regulated and managed contractor's yard. The Cape Associates Yard in Easton would be a good example. That is an appropriate scale with appropriate screening of noise and visual effects. The proposed use consisting of a large number of frequently moved, very large construction vehicles combined with the storage and movement of a variety of earth and materials related to an excavation business is simply not an industrial, is simply an industrial use in a commercial zone, not a contractor yard. The negative impact on my property if the project proceeds would be as follows. Noise in recent weeks earthquake has been performed on the site by a host of vehicles that mirror the types of vehicles proposed to be used stored on the site, large excavator, 10-wheel dump truck trailers. Even with my windows closed, the roar of vehicles and the constant beeping of OSHA required backup signals could be heard within my home at a disturbing level. One can only imagine the impact in summer with windows open and when the facility is actually operating. Acoustic engineers, if consulted, will report that fencing and landscape screening will only reduce the norm noise impact on the neighborhood in a minor way. Safety. The maneuvering of large, often trailer vehicles on and off the site can create safety issues. Examples include GFM eastbound vehicles attempting a left turn onto the site are coming down a hill just as two lanes, two lane, travel lanes merge into one. Westbound vehicles entering the site are required to slow to a near stop on a 45 mile an hour speed limit road just past the busy intersection of Old Wharf Road. Recent psych activities, even in the dead of winter, show this to be the case. Visual blight. A site has been essentially stripped of all vegetation, including the continuous strip of low native vegetation that fell within the state highway right of way. This activity has left the entire site operation exposed to view as it forms the gateway to the to a residential neighborhood and to Blackfish Creek. The proposed solution of a single straight line of trees at 15-foot intervals is wholly inadequate. I'm told that even the owner's arborist admits it will be 10 to 12 years before they would form an effective hedge screen. I would argue that even doubling the number of trees would not properly restore what was lost, i.e. a natural screen composed of a variety of native species with enough depth so as to create a varied landscape edge versus a straight line. Based on these concerns and those expressed by my neighbors, I request that the board overturn the improper improperly issued building permit as the proposed use is simply not allowable by Wellfleet zoning. Should the board decide the proposed use is allowed, I would suggest that the proposal be given rigorous scrutiny with special attention to the type and number of equipment to be stored and operated. Hours of operation should be limited with particular focus on the busy months between Memorial Day and Labor Day. A full traffic study should be required. Sightlighting should be prohibited. A 30 to 50-foot wide raised burn buffer of landscape screening should be required with a complete visual barrier of a variety of native evergreens to simulate what was lost. Any fencing should be reviewed for compatibility to the neighboring area, natural cedar, and plastic fences avoided. Thank you for your service and consideration of my concerns as an affected property owner.
Through you, Madam Chairperson?
Yes.
If I may, um, now that we have a lot of letters that are going to be entered into the public record, do we need to read them all or just because there are a lot of them are repetitive of what we already heard so far?
That's what I was thinking, that perhaps we could just just say that they will all be entered into. I believe we've heard. I don't think there are any, in the letters I have, I don't think there are any further concerns that we have not already heard. Will. You have to unmute, Will.
I would just suggest, I agree with Mick, but just add, I think it might be beneficial just to recite the names of the folks we received the letters from.
Yeah.
Because I I suspect they're pretty repetitive from what we've heard thus far.
Right, okay. Yes, Jan, yes.
I totally agree, but I would also say that we have a letter from Peter and Diane Hall, and I think it is substantially different. Maybe they'd like to read it. And they have a business as opposed to, you know, it's.
Yeah, good idea. Yes, go ahead.
Would they like to read their letter?
Do you like to read your letter? Pauls?
Hi, if you could read it, I have a bunch of drafts here. I don't have the pen.
Be happy to do it, yes.
So if you could read it, that that would be lovely.
Yeah, okay. This is from Peter and Diane Hall, who are the owners of Van Rensselaer's Restaurant, which is a direct abutter to this property. Uh, we have been in business for over 40 years in the town of Wellfleet. And we welcome new business ventures, new entrepreneurs, opportunities. We love what we do and we're grateful to be part of the community. With any expansion, renovation, or business plan change, we have gone through the proper channels, obtained necessary permits, and work with numerous boards, inspectors, departments, and town hall staff, all providing us with guidance, direction, and answers. Being a direct abutter, we have concerns regarding the property at 1065 State Highway. It is not clear to us what operations are allowed under contractor's yard and whether certain uses may have a negative impact on the neighborhood. We also feel that plans to re-nurish landscape should be enhanced. What business hours can abutters expect at the facility? And are there certain times of day when neighbors can expect more uh activity and noise? Could there be a provision to prohibit the use of, and it's in quotes, and maybe someone can explain this to us after I read it, Jake air brakes? I have no idea what those are, for trucks approaching the facility. Will there be any materials transported or stored on the property that could potentially result in soil, water, or air contamination? Will there be onsite processing of materials and or maintenance of equipment performed on the site? Will GFM have exclusive use of the contractor's yard? Or will other companies be using it as well? Could there be a provision for periodic water and soil testing with results filed at both the state and town level? The site plan shows a proposed single straight gravel driveway. What type of base will there be on the rest of the property? Uh, is there potential for dust from vehicular traffic and what kind of dust management plan is proposed in order to keep it contained within the property? Will the current site plan as presented, and I'm sure you wrote this before the one that was presented yesterday night to us via email, be maintained over the course of time? Will the 40-foot metal storage container be situated on the lot permanently? Or might it be replaced with a structure that better suits the area? Will any type of sanitation restroom facility um be situated on the property? We assume that the open abandoned foundation is now the responsibility of the current owner. Is there a timeframe in which it must be either removed or filled or be built upon? If a change of use for this property comes uh to be in the future, will abutters as well as the town of Wealthy be notified in advance? Massadot is proposing a number of plans for alterations on Route Six in Wellfleet. Is this something that should be taken into consideration in regards to traffic flow and impact? We question the efficiency of the mitigation efforts to restore vegetation. Might additional plantings be advantageous to create a border slash buffer around the property that is immediately defined? The northeast corner of the property is narrow and low-lying. Could this corner, the entrance to Old Wharf Road, Ascenic Road, and Wealthy be restored to a more natural state? Will there be an irrigation system around the perimeter of the property to encourage the Leland Cypress trees to grow at an optimal rate and create the kind of screening described? We understand and appreciate that there will be a business located on 1065 State Highway and we wish to be exceptional neighbors. It is our hope that the new property owners and their tenants will be considerate of abutters, the residents of Old Wharf Road, the Cape Cod National Seashore, and the town of Wealthy. Sharon, do you want me to read the names of the other?
Read the names of the other other people that you've gotten letters from.
A lengthy letter from Christine Woods. And may I just say one small paragraph about safety in hers, it's different?
Sure.
10 children from owners' families will visit and stay at the four homes directly abutting the project. Uh, 25 Wickson Avenue, number one, two, three, and four. Four of whom are under the age of three, creating a need for vigilance. We ask for proper fencing and road safety precautions uh to be put in place to protect families. Okay, and then we have a letter from William and Caroline Tonner. A letter, a letter from Susan Reverbey. A letter from Ed Franklin. Uh, and one from Douglas and Cynthia Franklin. A letter from Cat Williams. Catherine Corbin and Mark Penzel, Penzel, not sure which, and George Taylor.
Thank you. And I also have letters from Joanne Gibbons and from Beth and Keith Jorgensen. Okay. So those are the letters we have.
If I may, Sharon, I.
Oh, yes, you have two more, right?
I come in late this afternoon.
Okay.
Miranda Gooding, I'm not good with names, Samasco, William Tonner, Caroline Tonner, Bill Iacosa, and David Barrett.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Iacosa referred to his letter earlier when he spoke. Yes, thank you. All right, I think that's everyone who wanted to speak. Will, you have your hand up.
Oh, no, I I my question was was answered. So sorry about that.
It's okay. You're better at at the hand thing than anything else. Okay, I'm I'm going to questions to from the board to Mr. Reed, who is the.
Could we hear from Attorney Zender, please?
Um, he he did defer. I don't know if he was ready to present, ready to respond at this point.
Does not intend to.
I don't know, did Mr. presenter or did you want to respond at this point?
I, I did, I just, may I, may I, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, I just wanted to make sure that the, the petitioner's presentations were complete before I responded.
Okay.
So if I may proceed now.
Yes.
First of all, I, I think it's important because the board is now sitting in its legislative capacity or in its judicial capacity, I'm sorry, to, to determine one very simple question. And that's whether the building inspector erred in providing permission for my clients to commence operations of a Contractor's Yard. You're not sitting as a special permit granting authority to impose conditions on the operation. You're not sitting as a various granting authority. You're really here to answer that one simple question. So before I argue as to why the building inspector was correct in his interpretation, I'd like to make sure that the board is very clear as to what happened before and what's in front of this board. My clients went in and removed vegetation. And, and you've heard some testimony about that from various people. They were never cited by the building inspector or issued a cease and desist letter for removal of vegetation. In fact, they removed their trees on their property in preparation for their operation of a commercial use on that property. The building inspector issued a cease and desist letter opining that the activities of GFM Enterprises constituted quarrying or mining, which is defined in your, in your bio as removing materials for the purpose of sale. He also issued an opinion that the Contractor's Yard operation could not include open bulk storage of materials, which were represented to the building inspectors, including sand and gravel and topsoil and other bulk materials that were going to be used on the site in connection with the operation. Any further opined that the processing of materials and what was presented to the building inspector was the, was the, um, the grading of stone and processing of materials that were brought to the site. And he opined that that was in fact a light industry use that also would have required a, a special permit in the commercial district. So what was in front of the zoning board at your, at your series of hearings was not whether or not GFM could operate a Contractor's Yard, it's whether it could include open bulk storage of materials and whether processing materials was permitted. Further, the board considered the application for a special permit for open bulk storage, and it considered a special permit for light industry processing of materials. What the board did was it upheld the building inspector's determination that it was quarry or mining under a cease and desist order. It upheld the building inspector's determination that the storage and use of sand, gravel, topsoil, hardener, et cetera, was in fact a separate use that required a special permit. That the processing of materials was a separate use that required a special permit. And finally, the board denied the grant of special permits for open bulk storage and for processing of materials. It never determined that the proposed use was not in fact a Contractor's Yard. Following the filing of those decisions with the town clerk, we appealed to the land court and then commenced discussion with the building inspector and your town council as to whether or not we could present an application for a Contractor's Yard that did not include any open bulk storage of materials, meaning that the court would decide that issue in due course, but they would commence operations of the uncontested elements of a Contractor's Yard. And the building inspector then requested, over a series of many emails, items to be presented to the building inspector so that he could review this request. We made a formal request to the building inspector that he provide us with the formal application form that was required to ask to undertake this activity, and we never received a form for the simple fact that there isn't one. For the further simple fact that a permanent as of right use historically in Wellfleet has never been required to apply to the building inspector for permission. So we worked with the building inspector, whom I assume and believe and understand worked with town council, to provide to the building inspector not only a site plan, which we don't believe was required for undertaking as of right use, but also lists of materials and lists of vehicles and a description of the operation. Mr. Reed provided you with a statement in one of my emails that said, including bulk storage. The language that email was intended to convey to the building inspector, and I believe the building inspector understood that we were not going to store any bulk items on this site, sand, gravel, topsoil, hardener, and we don't intend to unless and until the land court says that we're able to as a part of this use or unless and until this board grants a special permit that we're going. So to the extent that this board believes that we're intending to store open bulk materials, we are not. The materials that are being stored on the site right now were reviewed by the building inspector. Even insofar as when Greg Morris was removing concrete blocks from the Truro site, which he no longer has as a leasehold, and wanted to store them on this site, I received a request from my client saying, can we put concrete blocks on the site? And I reached out to the building inspector, and I said, my client would like to put those there. Is that permissible? And he said, yes, I consider concrete blocks, because GFM uses them to hold up foundations and to provide, you know, vehicle barriers and to provide ballast for certain activities they undertake at contract sites. The building inspector said, you can put those on the site as long as you don't arrange them in such way that they would constitute material bits. And I asked the building inspector to confirm that in writing, and he did. In fact, we made sure that we undertook all of those steps before that material came to the site. So we have worked with the building inspector throughout this entire process to make sure that every activity on that site, including removal of those sand piles that you started up removed, removal of the topsoil, replacement of the topsoil, closing off of the separate entrance to the property, not undertaking any activity until the DOT permit was achieved. All of these things were done in direct communication with the building inspector. So I want to just make sure that the board understands that that's the process. So at this time, there's no intention or permission, I believe, to have any open bulk storage of, of materials on the site. And that would be something that will come up based on whatever the land court decides, whether it's a permitted use as part of the Contractor's Yard or not. So the only question in front of this board is not whether this use is noxious, because that's not the basis of Mr. Reed's appeal. The basis of his appeal is the building inspector aired in determining that this was a Contractor's Yard. So to get to the merits of that particular question, I don't know. It is an ability to share screens using the system?
Yep.
Okay, would, would Ms. Base be able to give me permission to share the screen?
Yes, she would.
I don't know how to give you permission.
I think you can just share it. I don't think it's actually prohibited.
More, share a screen, okay, are you all ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, can you all see this?
Right now, yes.
What I've done is I just printed out what I consider to be important provisions of your zoning bylaw for the members to look at, okay? And I'm going to go back to Contractor's Yard in a moment, but I'm going to just go to the use tables, okay? And, and, and we all know these use tables. We look at them every day, and, and we find that every day that we look at them, they don't solve a problem, but we look at them anyways, and we try to figure them out, okay? And looking at the second to the right column is the commercial zoning district, okay? And when we go down under commercial uses, and I've highlighted this just for my own purposes, if you look down this column, beginning with adult bookstore, which I don't think anyone's ever tried to permit the town of Wellfleet, and I hope never will, you'll see that everything in this column is either an A or an O, which means it's either permitted by special permit or it's, or it's prohibited. There's only one P in this entire column, as you go all the way down to the end, and I go back up again. It's a Contractor's Yard. So I, I don't think there's any question that the bylaw intends, it was voted on at town meeting, that a Contractor's Yard is permitted of right, which, and, and what that means in my mind is it doesn't require permission. It only requires a demonstration or a compliance with the zoning bylaw in terms of what that is. And, and further, it's my belief and opinion that the building inspector's role and permitted activity in the case of an as of right permitted use is not to demand proof upfront on bended knee that you're going to comply with the bylaw. It's as an enforcement agent, if you don't comply with the bylaw. Meaning, for example, if you're a shellfisherman in Wellfleet, and you want to have a shellfish yard in your property, and you comply with the requirements in the bylaw for setback from property and screening your shellfish, and, and you follow the rules in the bylaw, you don't have to go to the building inspector and say, I'm going to do this, will you let me do it? You, you do it. And, and, and so I think the problem that we have here, and I'll go back to the definition of the Contractor's Yard, really is what were people thinking when they adopted this bylaw provision? And, and we all bring this definition, what we think it should have meant when it was voted on. And my brother attorney Ray talked about the fact that the commercial district is small and moderate local businesses. Well, what is a, what is a moderately sized business? It's not a small business, right? So we all bring to that what we think it means. But putting aside what we think it means, we have to read what it says. It's a premises, and, and I have to disagree with, with Mr. Timas, as much as I love his family and, and Miss's father. I believe in the context of the zoning code, a premises is a piece of land. It's not a building, it's not a structure. It's a, it's a piece of land used by a building contractor or subcontractor. I don't think there's any question that, that, that GFM is in the business of providing, in the context of people's construction and use of their properties, building contractor and subcontractor services. He goes to the sites, he installs septic systems, he builds driveways, he removes foundation sand, he removes trees and brush, he goes back in and, and places materials down, whether it's hardener or gravel. He's a contractor, or in some cases, he may be a subcontractor to another larger contractor. That the premises used principally for storage, and, and in this case, the application of the building inspector was to principally use this property for storage of, and I'll have to move my little photo thing, of equipment and supplies. And the list that we provided to the building inspector was a list of equipment and supplies. And those equipment included bobcats, they included, you know, types of, types of equipment that sit on trailers and supplies, there was a list. It's risers that are put in septic systems, it's concrete blocks that are used as part of the construction process. It's, there's a whole list of those things. But there's no question that those are supplies that are used by the business. Fabrication of sub-assemblment, we don't really have that. Or parking of wheeled equipment, okay? So, and, and we provided a list of the wheel types of equipment that was intended to be stored. So the building inspector looked at this definition and communicated with your town council and formed an opinion about whether or not this use is in fact a Contractor's Yard. And for this board to overturn that building inspector, you have to have a clear reason, an interpretation that says, no, this is not a Contractor's Yard. Because if it's not a Contractor's Yard, it's not permitted in the town of Wellfleet. It's not permitted, meaning, meaning in your code, it says specifically, a use that's not permitted is prohibited in the town of Wellfleet. So if you're saying this, then you're saying that anybody, any building contractor subcontractor that's using the site principally for these purposes is undertaking a prohibited use in the town of Wellfleet. I don't think that was the intent of the bylaw. And finally, I don't think you can read into this definition a, a quantitative requirement, meaning if you get above three pieces of wheeled equipment, if your trucks are bigger than a certain size, if your business is bigger or smaller than a certain size, that that's what this definition says because it does. And because it doesn't say that, for you to look at this application and form an opinion that this use is not a Contractor's Yard, you're applying a subjective standard of review based in part upon the, the concerns expressed by abutters or other people in the area, expressed in part by your own feelings about this particular activity and the way it was undertaken or, or how it was permitted. And you're applying a subjective standard of review that this bylaw doesn't permit you to provide to this. So I don't think that you can say that the building inspector aired in his determination that this is in fact a Contractor's Yard. And I think for that reason, you really kind of have to uphold it. Because to not uphold this, what you're essentially saying is, we're going to look beyond the bylaw. We're going to look beyond the building inspector, and we're just going to listen to our emotional response to what's happening out there. And finally, I have to say that as much as GFM Enterprises and the landlord have been excoriated publicly about this activity, what they've done is gone in and removed their trees on their property. They've prepared their property for their commercial use of this property, for, for a use that's been determined by the building inspector to be a lawful use of this property. And there was no form to apply for to remove trees, there's no form to apply for, to apply for a permitted use. They undertook it all. So because people don't like the change in the site or the change in the view of the approach to Old Wharf Road or even what's along Old Wharf Road, that doesn't mean that this yard, this use is unlawful, and I don't think you have the ability to overturn the building inspector. Finally.
That's your fourth finally, Ben.
I know, they just keep coming along.
Justin, just so you know.
Yeah, I know, but this is, this, it's an important case, so I'm going to be a little bit longer than usual.
Just don't keep using finally.
Okay, well, well, penultimately, how about if I say that?
Yeah, okay.
This contractor is using this property for their business, meaning their, this is part of their business plan, they're paying rent for it, they've moved their operation from a Truro site where the lease was, was up. They're into this site, I don't believe that this board has the authority to shut this business down. And if you do believe that you do, and if you undertake that, I can tell you in no uncertain terms, they're not going to cease this use, absent an order of a court that says that they can't do it. And I think that's the proper forum for that. If somebody wants to seek a preliminary injunction and say that this shouldn't, this shouldn't undertake. For this board to try in the course of this appeal, to substitute its authority for the building inspector and shut this building down, this is down, it's going to engender significant damages on the part of this client that is not going to significantly help anybody in town other than is going to hurt its advocate. And so I'm hopeful this board will, and this is my finally, yeah, okay? I hope you consider the bylaw. I hope you vote to uphold the building inspector, and I hope you close this matter out. Thank you very much.
Madam Chairman, could I ask Ben to repeat one thing he said, because I missed part of it?
Sure, one of his finales.
Through you, Sharon.
Yes.
Ben, I missed what you said, what would, what's the proper form for a cease and desist order? You said you didn't think it was R.
No, this, this action was undertaken through lawfully issued permission by the building inspector. I believe that this use doesn't require the permission of the building inspector, which means that the town, and I'm going to restrict my comments to the end of the town because obviously neighbors can undertake separate legal acts. If the town believes that it, that this use is not a permitted use, then I believe that it needs to seek a preliminary injunction and an order of the court that the, that the, that the use can't be used. And I think it's important for the town to go through that process if it's going to try to shut this business down because of the significant ramifications of shutting down an ongoing business. Thank you.
But what I don't understand is who, the town is, you know, what do you mean by the town?
Dan, Dan, can I ask Jonathan to explain that process to us?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I generally agree with Attorney Zender on his characterization of how the board would go or how the town would go about enforcing it. If the board were to determine that the building inspector aired in his decision and revoked the use determinate, determination, or determined that this was not a Contractor's Yard, the GFM would not have would not have permission to go forward with that use. But the mechanism by which the town would enforce that decision is by filing a lawsuit, seeking a preliminary injunction, injunction, and having a judge issue that court order. That's the mechanism, mechanism by which the town could legally require Attorney Zender's client to stop. But it would be, it would be a continuation of a decision it makes tonight.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, if we decided that the building inspector was in error, that would be our decision, and then it would be up to the town to enforce that decision.
Yes, that is my opinion.
Did that answer your question, Jan?
Absolutely, thank you, everyone.
Okay, Will.
Yeah, I have a question for you, Ben. In terms of, of a Contractor's Yard, are, are you saying that if an applicant came before us and they had a hundred eighteen wheelers, that there'd be no need to look at the criteria for general uses in paragraph, in sections five point two or six point seven?
Madam Chair.
It just seems to me at some point, a Contractor's Yard becomes an industrial use.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
You know, I, I think it's important that we differentiate between industrial uses and, and other uses because industrial uses aren't industrial because of the, the size of the use. They're industrial because of the nature. And when you look at the. And when you look at the definitions for industry, both of those involve. And and I can I I can read it very quickly, and I'll think it's pretty quick, but. Heavy industry is the production, assembly, processing, finishing, or manufacture of an object or material. Light industry is the fabrication, assembly, processing, finishing work or packages. Such that you don't have noise, dust, or objectionable odors. Industry is 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 the manufacturing of something. Um so.
But it the the by our bylaw does say, which results in or would result in noise, dust, odor. Vibration or gases or any objectionable feature that can or could be detected at any time off the premises in which located. That's part of our definition of.
I I agree, Sharon, but the but the precursor to that statement is that it's it's that it's an industrial manufacturer or processing of an object or material, so.
Okay, then 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 take that out of my question. You have, I I won't characterize characterize what type of use a hundred eighteen wheelers is. But then but where does that relate then to par paragraph six point two and six point seven? Are those minimum criteria that are set forth in there are just. Irrelevant to their 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 use, or are you saying since the the there's nothing really. Concrete in the bylaw of of how how this should be enforced, since there's no site plan. Requirement, is it the fact that there there's no way to uh to enforce it that's. Written there, or i- i- is it is the the is it the substance of?
Madam Chair, if I could answer that question?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I I I think this is where section five point two comes in, which which attorney Wise referred the board to. Well, there's a point at which the use as a as a contractor's yard. Will become unreasonable under five point two, where it becomes in the in the in in its detrimental or offensive or tend to reduce property values in the same. But by reason of dust, dirt, layer, odor. So I think if you look at the bylaw as a whole, you have to say that contractors' yards are permitted in the commercial district. And that there's a certain amount of of noise, dust, odor that's that's normally associated with a contractor's yard. That the town anticipated would be a part of that use. But that if you if that contractor's yard is operated in such a way that it provides an unreasonable amount of those things. Over and above what a contractor's yard should produce, then I think it will violate five point two, and and I think in your example, well. You know, a hundred eighteen wheelers are certainly going to trigger five point two. So the question here, although it hasn't been raised by attorney Reed, and it may come later. Is whether or not this operation by GFM. Is outside of the norm of that operation that would be contemplated, you know, as a normal and reasonable contractor's yard used such that it's it it can't be maintained. But that's an after the fact determination. That would be an appeal later based on information presented to this board or first to the building inspector.
Thanks.
Okay. So I guess I, Mr. Reed, do you want to respond to anything from Mr. Zender before I go to the.
Very briefly. I I think it's actually Mr. Zender who's trying to force you to take a far too narrow view of the bylaw. You have a chart. That shows categories of uses allowed in certain districts. And contractors yard, as we've admitted from the very beginning, is a category of use that's allowed in the commercial zone. But you can't ignore the other provisions of the bylaw that we cited to you. In the uh district definition in five point two and in six point seven. That qualify those general categories by putting parameters that are unacceptable for any uses. Whether they're allowed by right or by special permit. And this is not purely a prospective speculation as to what might happen, this use is already happening. And it already was happening back in in April when you last reviewed this situation. You have not just speculation. But concrete evidence before you that the activity at this site does offend these qualifications and these protections. And for that reason, you now have the ability to make the decision that they do, this is not the type. Of contractors yard that fulfills the requirements, all of the requirements. Of the wealth fleet zoning bylaw, not just the generic table. But the specific qualitative requirements set forth in the bylaw. And as for your authority tonight, as I quoted to you from section fourteen of chapter forty eight. You have all the powers that the building commissioner had. And if you decide tonight that for any of or any or all of these reasons. That this permit should not have been issued, not because it isn't a contractor's yard. But because it isn't the type of contractor's yard that is intended to be permitted in this district. Then you then you should revoke this permission, revoke this permit. And and allow the applicant to proceed with whatever legal recourse they think they have.
Okay, I'm going to go to questions from the board, I guess, at this point, so. Um I guess I'm going to start with you, Will.
I have no questions, I I I I'll I'll like to make some comments at the end of 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 the questions, but.
Sure, okay, all right. Mick, do you have questions?
No, I have no questions.
Okay, um Andy.
No, I have no questions, but I do have some things I'd like to say.
Okay.
No questions at this time.
Okay, um Manny.
I have no questions at this time.
Al?
No questions, but I have a comment.
Okay, all right, and Jan.
Um I have a wondered maybe two questions for town council through you, and then I also have comments later.
Okay.
Um okay, so as we've mentioned already, the definition of. Open bulk storage lists exposed outside storage of sand, lumber, coal, or other bulk materials or supplies. And in our findings, the last three findings, okay. Uh number four A says, in the operation of his business, GFM intends to store bulk supplies on the property. Including steel plates, precast risers, piping, outdoor containers, rebar, concrete panels, sand, loam, T-bass, and stone, so. At the town council, as I read this finding, it wasn't just sand, loam, T-bass, and stones that. We would consider possibly as bulk storage.
You are correct, that is what you decided last year, the building inspector determined based off of communications with attorney Zender and his client. Um and I I know the building inspector asked for a lot of information from attorney Zender. Determined that the types of materials that they have on the property now or soon to. I believe the blocks are coming or soon to be on, Ben can correct me. Uh were accessory to the contractor's yard use. So if you as the board determine that that was an error, you can cite that as a reason, but. Mister Stately deter determines that the types of materials he proposed. Were consistent with the contractor's yard definition.
Right, but that's not what I what we found in our what we listed in our findings.
Right.
From the last three hearings.
Sure.
Okay. Um maybe also one other thing that maybe Jonathan Jonathan can clear up.
Oh, sure.
We we have a a definition of a transport terminal and also a commercial vehicle in our bylaws. And it says that if the gross vehicle weight. Of um of vehicles um. Is over ten thousand GVW gross vehicle weight, they need a special permit for use. And I asked this question at the last hearings, but I didn't get a an answer. That what is the gross vehicle weights of the two ten wheelers and the six wheeler, and if they're over. If the ten thousand square uh square feet, right, ten thousand GVW are over, wouldn't they need a special permit to operate?
It was to you, Jonathan.
I apologize, I'm just trying to pull up the definition so that I.
Sure.
Okay, you need transport terminal and commercial vehicle.
Yes.
And I also think uh in the use table, it's listed as transportation terminal, I think that's a typographical error, there's no such thing as a transportation terminal. In our bylaws.
Uh my understanding, I I don't believe. Uh you you, I don't disbelieve you, I think you did raise that at the last time. Um I don't believe that the transport terminal discussion was ever had since the board issued those determine uh those um. Um I don't believe that has been a conversation between attorney Zender and the building inspector. Um he determined that the use proposed was more akin to a contractor's yard. Um so I I I can't. Give you any more information about the reasoning behind why he did that, but that's what he did.
I I wonder if he even knows about this one, okay. That's all my questions, I have comments related.
Okay, so. I think I can go now to comments, so. If anyone would like to begin by weighing in on comments. Well.
Now, I just have a couple of short ones, I mean, I just think that paragraphs five point two and six point seven. Uh of our bylaws set forth the min the minimum standards for for any use in town. And I just think the applicant has uh fails to meet ver virtually all of them. I mean, and in the follow up for. In 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 another life, I represented a large sand and gravel corporation. They went through Southern New Hampshire trying to get permits for them. And how many times I heard people say correctly, the 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 butters that. That the the beepers on these large vehicles has to one block out the background noise of roads and whatnot. But it also needs to block out the the sound of the commercial equipment that's going on around it. And so they're extremely loud. And as a matter of fact, here in in Waltham, and I I'm in a wooded subdivision. I can hear if I need the neighbor a hundred fifty, two hundred feet down down the road gets an oil delivery, I know it. Sitting on my deck, so they they're very, very loud, yeah, when Al gets one, I hear it, you know, so.
We al- we also hear the police station and the fire department, everything they do.
That that is right, so anyway, so that's that's, you know, that's uh and I I basically agree with everything that. Um attorneys or uh Reed and Rice had said said as well. That's it.
Thank you, Mick.
Yeah, um I agree with what Will just said, I from the last time we had a heart had our meeting. Nothing has changed for me to warrant me to change. I think we should overturn the building inspector's decision, because I don't see any change at all.
Andy.
Yes, um. I guess I I don't, I I'm a little confused, I wish the building inspector were here because uh. Like I have some questions for him, but I guess I'll have them at another time. But I don't believe anything has changed either, and I also can't tell from the site plan that. Ben sent to us yesterday. You know. What materials are on there, but it seems to me that. He said that I can read this, sand, gravel, topsoil, stone. One half, one and a half stone and T-bass are all going to be stored there. And so that to me is bulk storage. Now, um and 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 as Will has said, and as the two attorneys for the. Butters have said, five, two, and six, seven do apply here, and there's just. I don't think I disagree with Ben insofar as he says, well, you got to wait until it happens. First of all, we all just, it's common sense, it's going to happen, and second of all, the noise and. Vibrations have already occurred, we just, we've heard from the butters, the 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 actual butters. That, you know, like that their plates are shaking and things like that, and. This contractor hasn't really even started to operate his business, so um. I I uh. I would, I'm going to vote to overturn the building inspector.
Okay, Trevor.
Oh, I don't know, I'm I'm not sitting on this kitchen any longer, but um. I I've, I'm really on the fence on this, I I I feel that they they have the right to operate a contractor's yard. Off out of this property and. I don't, I'm really conflicted with how we. I guess regulate that um in a way that's acceptable to everybody. Um and I'm not sure, I'm not sure what the answer is. But it seems to me that. They have the right to operate. A contractor's yard, you know, and how we define that exactly. I don't know.
Manny.
Uh I agree with Trevor, I um. I believe it should be a contractor's yard, although we all don't. Like would like to have it there. Um I think the building inspector should be the one to um. Govern this, if there's noise, if there's whatever, as he said before. He could put a stop work or or shut it down. It's in the right zone. Uh not because, you know, they messed up from the beginning. Um it's in the area where it's permitted. Who knows how much gravel, how much sand uh they will store there, but. I don't think our bylaw says how much you can store. And that's about it, uh so I would be for this.
Okay, thank you, Al.
I think that uh. A contractor's yard is absolutely permitted, but as attorney Reed indicated, what kind? And um clearly, what is going on with Mr. Zender's, you know, client. Is at variance with five point two, the permitted uses. Um uh you know, and that it shall not be detrimental or offensive or reduce. You know, property values, you know, in terms of sand and odor and all that. And so i- it's. It's really, it's, I mean, I have an emotional feeling about this, I mean, I think it's just, you know, outrageous. Uh you know, what what's going on and and these poor people who abut the property have to put up with it. Uh but it also does not meet the provisions of five, two, and and six, seven. And I think the building permit was issued in error, and I would urge uh board board members to um. Uh you know, make that clear.
Thank you, and Jan.
Well, I don't want to repeat uh everything that my fellow board member said, but I agree with everything everybody said except for Manny and Trevor. Um I I think that. The intent, the proposed uses go far beyond what a contractor's yard was meant to to be. Uh I think that the the uses that they want to do here require at least one special permit, maybe several. Um and you know, back to five point two and six point seven. Who's going to look me in the eye and tell me with a straight face that property values are not affected? And there's not going to be noise, and there's not going to be dust, I mean, I'm very concerned about the property values um. I'm not going to repeat what everybody else said. Oh, I have one more point.
Yes.
Well, the definition of contractor's yard references parked vehicles, and of course, they're not just going to sit there and park, they're going to move. But implies to me a more passive use, and this is not going to be a passive yard. These vehicles are going to be moving and shifting and banging around big metal plates and concrete blocks. And stone and sand, this is not a passive contractor's yard.
Okay, and. I I agree with the idea that this isn't really, I mean. I feel that we already heard this case, that we already looked at essentially the exact same plans. That we're looking at now, back in April, that we hashed over it and listened to the neighbors and listened to the attorneys. And we made a determination that this was a more intensive use than was intended to be by right. In this particular lot, I think it's interesting that the planning board is now actually looking at the definition of contractor's yard. Because I think they also suspected that, you know, they handed us a conundrum here. But I haven't changed my mind since April, it still looks like bulk storage to me. It still looks like a much more intensive use, it doesn't meet five point two, it doesn't meet six point seven, and the other thing we have to think about. Is that we are required to consider the district objectives of the abutting districts, this abuts the seashore and R one. And those districts don't. You know, it it defies those as well. So. I think the building inspector was in error, something that. I actually told the building inspector. I actually told the building inspector, um, but he didn't agree with me, so. So this is where we are.
Through you, Madam Chairperson?
Yes.
Yep, so we've kind of gone around the room. You got to feel for the board. Should we make a motion right now?
I believe we do need to motion. Yes.
Okay, so.
I guess we need to move to findings, actually.
I was going to make a motion to move to findings.
Okay, alright. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to go to findings. Okay, now I had two sets of findings here. I had session section of findings to deny. At to overturn the building inspector, and I had a section of findings to refer it to the Cape Cod Commission. Attorney Reed has taken. Referring to the Cape Cod Commission off the table, so these are my. Findings for um. For denying the, for. Granting the appeal. Um, so you're going to have to bear with me in the language here and see if it makes any sense. Um, this is an appeal from a person aggrieved Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty eight, Section eight and fifteen. And wealth fleet zoning by law, Section eight point four point one. Appeal of the building commissioners authorizing the use of the site. I didn't, I didn't get a votes to go to findings, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I made a motion to go to find.
A motion, yes. Um, so all in favor, Mick?
I.
Dan.
Did you say Jan? I.
Yeah, Manny.
Hi.
Andy.
Hi.
Okay, and Sharon, I. Back again. I'm not going to repeat. Appeal is to reverse the decision and modify the use conditions. And or modify the use conditions approved in order to fully comply to the bylaw and earlier decisions of the board. The lot is in the commercial district. In three earlier decisions on April twenty first, twenty twenty one, the board upheld the determination of the building inspector that the use proposed. Was subject to special permits and denied those special permits. Those decisions were appealed and the case remains in land court. On November tenth, twenty twenty one, the building inspector approved the use of a contractor's yard sub- subject to certain qualifications and conditions. A contractor's yard is a permitted use in the commercial district. Wealth fleet zoning zoning by law defines a contractor's yard as premises used by a building contractor or subcontractor. Practically for the storage of equipment and supplies, fabrication of sub assemblies. Or parking of wheeled equipment. Although the applicant does intend to use the yard for storage of equipment and supplies, the applicant also proposes to store sand, loam, T base. And stone in open storage. This would conform to the definition of bulk open storage, which is defined as bulk storage open, exposed outside. Storage of sand, lumber, coal, or other bulk materials and supplies. Which is not included in the definition of a contractor's yard and requires a special permit. The applicant proposes to store and use ten construction vehicles, several of which are not wheeled. The construction vehicles proposed are considered heavy industrial vehicles. Well, it's owning by by law defines light industry as fabrication, assembly, processing. Finishing work or packaging in such a manner that noise, odor. Dust, noise, dust, odor, vibration, or similar objectionable features are confined to the premises and are in no way objectionable to the abutting property. Well, fleet zoning by law defends heavy industry as the production, assembly, processing, or manufacture. Which results in or would result in noise, dust, odor, vibration, or gases, or any objectionable feature. That can or could be detected at any time off the premises in which located. Heavy industry is not a permitted use in the commercial district. As regards the bulk open storage use, the board is mindful of wealthy zoning by law five point two, which states that permitted uses and. Uses authorized under special permits shall be in conformity. With the provisions of section five point three and shall not be detrimental or offensive. Or tend to reduce property values in the same or adjoining districts by reason of dust. Dirt, dust, glare, odor, fume, smoke, gas, sewage, refuse, noise. Vibration, danger, fire or explosion, traffic congestion. It would appear that the proposed uses would not be in conformity with the district objectives for the commercial district as defined by wealthy in wealthy zoning by law. Three point two, which is to provide for small and moderate scale business developments for local and transient service. At the same time preserving or enhancing ocean views from highway, preserving or enhancing landscaping. Minimizing visibility of parked cars and avoiding creation of hazards or congestion. The locus of the property. Uh, directly abuts residential and national seashore. Um, districts and the board is required to be mindful of the district objectives of abutting districts as well. The board has found that pursuant to wealthy zoning by law eight point four point two point three. Scenic views from public ways and developed properties have not been considerably treated. Reasonable efforts have not been made to minimize visibility, parking and service areas from public streets. Thus. The board finds that the permit was issued in a error and. I just have to stop with that. I'll just stop with the findings there, and you can decide what you want to do. Those are the findings. I need a.
I'll make a motion to move the findings.
Okay, I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, Jan.
I.
Manny.
I.
I Andy. Andy.
I.
You have to, you know, um, Mick.
I.
And Sharon, I. Okay. Then I need a motion to uphold the appeal and. Revoke the permit, I believe. Is that correct, Jonathan?
Uh, it it could be a motion to overturn the building inspector and revoke them.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to overturn the building inspector. And to revoke the permit.
And revoke the permit. Um, I need a second.
I'll second.
Andy seconds, all in favor, Jan.
I.
Nick.
I.
Andy.
I.
Manny.
Nick.
And Sharon, I. Okay. The motion carries.
Okay, I'm sorry, could I, could could we run by that one more time? Manny, you said no.
Manny, yes, everybody, uh, for I, Jan, I, Will, I, Andy, I. Manny, no, and Sharon, I.
Okay, thank, thank you.
And.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Right, Jonathan, one question. Um, do I? Do I need to add that, condish that? Final decision to the findings or the findings? Okay, this way, and then we just add that.
The findings are okay, and you can add the motion at the end.
Okay, alright.
Thank you.
Okay.
Will will the cease and desist be addressed here or or?
Yeah, because we revoked the permit.
Okay.
Yes, so.
Okay, good.
Yeah. It has been. It it will. It will go back to court.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, um, board, we do have um, minutes. To look at, so. We have the minutes of of Will. You're muted, Will.
I I move they be approved as written.
Okay, I need a second.
I'll second.
Alright, all in, all in favor, Manny.
I.
Uh, Nick.
I.
Andy.
I.
Trevor.
Wasn't there.
You can, doesn't matter, you can vote on minutes. You just can't ma- ma- move them or approve or second them.
Well, in that case, they were great.
Will.
I.
Uh, Al.
I.
Jan.
I, and before we go, can I say one thing?
I, yes, yes, now you can say one thing, yes.
Uh, I was just on the town website this evening, and there would appear to be a new version of the zoning bylaws. The last one was. Twenty eighteen, and this is twenty twenty one. How can we get paper copies?
We, Chris gives us paper copies.
But how do we get them from town?
Well, they'll be on our packages.
Ah, okay.
Hopefully, I will get some.
Hopefully, she will get them, and then we will get them.
Chris is going to get them from the town clerk.
Yes, the other thing is that despite the fact that it is, you've all worked very hard, and it is now ten o'clock. You did get one reward in that we do not have a February tenth meeting. So.
Crush, crush.
So we um, we do not meet again until the twenty fourth.
And I just, um, is Jonathan still on? I my Zoom fell apart.
Uh, I think Jonathan may.
Okay.
Are you still here, Jonathan? Yes, okay.
Alright, so. Tech, uh, technically and procedurally, where do we stand now with this matter?
Your decision right now is still within the appeal period. Um, I would suspect that there might be an appeal um. To the land court, and those cases would be consolidated, which is usually how it goes. Um, and then the court could make a determination on last year's decisions and whether or not. The tonight's decision was consistent with the zoning act.
The reason why I asked is, and I just, I maybe I. Misunderstood or probably I've forgotten. It's, I I suspect it's the latter, given my age. You, there was some discussion with you previously uh. During this hearing about injunction injunctive relief and who would have to move for it? And could you, could you clarify that for me again?
Uh, yes, I hesitate to be very specific right now because we're, we're, we're kind of outside of the. This case and and I don't want to, you know. Get into.
Speak in theoretical terms then.
You don't even have, you don't have to do that. If, I mean, if you. I mean, I I I often have some questions for you, Jonathan, or for Carolyn, or whomever.
Yeah.
And I guess maybe what I should do should.
Send them to me, and I will get them to them. And then we.
In this case, I'll do that, in this instance. Okay, very good.
Very good, that's fine. Yes, submit them to me, and I will submit them and get you answers back.
Motion to adjourn.
I think we need a motion to adjourn, and we have been still recording, as far as I can tell, Carolyn. Thanks to Trevor, we are still recording.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Mick has made a motion to adjourn. I need a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Will.
I.
Trevor.
I, maybe.
Uh, Manny. Manny. May have gone off to Key West already. Um, Nick.
I, and I'll see you guys later.
Dan.
I.
Al.
I.
Andy.
I.
And Sharon, I.
Alright.
I think, I think Manny went back on the beach as soon as. As soon as we start talking about anything else.
Alright.
Good night.
Good night, everybody. I will see you in four weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
I'm shutting it down.
Okay, you can turn the recorder.